To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buck, I think we're going to, okay. I think we're going to go ahead and talk a little bit about the police budget during public comment, since you're really not on the agenda, we'll just do it then. I do, I do want to say one thing before we start. Can I say one thing? Can we start public comment?
Sure.
Okay. I want to say one thing before we start public comment. Buck is here tonight as a member of the Finance Committee for the Police Commission, and what he wants to talk about are the number of PPU's which are required for New Freedom Borough to purchase for this year. So I want to, I do want to start off by saying, we are 100% in approval of the police budget itself and the new value for the PPU's. We're 100% pro-police. We don't agree with Police Commission unilaterally changing contract, so we believe that we are required to purchase 15.16 PPU's for this year. This year actually was a no-brainer year. There should be no controversy in the police budget for this year. The only change per the IGA is the value of a PPU, which we, which we agree with. So, that being said, I've been playing with my crayons this morning.
And we can read that.
Okay? So we agree with the value of the PPU, which is $40,590.63. So that's all taken care of. This is the section that defines costs in the IGA, which is our contract. So it says, "No member municipality may reduce its unit's bill of that acquired professionally handle its obligated activities calculated on the three-year average." Does not define what the three-year average is. It does speak twice to the fact that you only change the PPU's every two years. So what this looks like on a, on a number line is, in 2019, the chief came up with PPU's for 2019 and 2020. Last year, he came up with 21 and 22, which is this year, which is 15.16. So 2021 and 22 would be 15.16. In '23, we're going to come up with something different. So these are the key clauses that Buck is going to talk about tonight. Effective as of the 2019 fiscal year, the minimum number of units shall be established every two years. This is the second year of the two-year cycle, so there should be no change to PPU's this year. Commencing with the budget presentation for 2019 fiscal year, member municipalities will be given by the Chief of Police what they're supposed to purchase for the next two fiscal years. That's what we're saying. We already know what it was. We, we had our budget last year of 15.19, 16. We don't have a crystal ball. Nobody does. I mean, we could have a bank robbery in January that causes our PPU's to be required to be increased. We could have another Whitman case that happened sometime in the middle of next year, which would cause our PPU's to go up. And a PPU, just for those who don't know what that is, instead of using ours, we use a PPU which is a quarter-time person. So if you take a police officer 10 hours a week for an entire year, that is one PPU. But it's a little different because we take the police officer and we add to him a little bit of chief, a little bit of a sergeant, we add the cars, we add the maintenance on the cars, we add the secretary, all of the overhead goes into that PPU. So whenever Buck is talking about PPU's, that's what he's talking about. A quarter-time officer with all the associated ammunition, gold-proof vest, everything, that's that PPU. I'm done, and I'll turn it over.
Do you want me, I mean, does somebody typically stand there?
That's fine.
Okay, I'm hit the button there, Buck. Have a seat and hit the button. There you go. You're welcome. I'm Buck Buchanan from Shrewsbury Borough Council, and I've been on the Police Commission. According to the plaque I just got, because I'm retiring from the borough, it's been 27 years. I've been saying 26, it's 27. All but the first two years of the Commission, I've been on that, that board. Andy's presentation and what he talked about is absolutely on target. The problem is, the wording is ambiguous, and as many times, you think you know what you wrote, and when you read it, because you were part of writing it or you're part of that whole discussion, it makes sense to you. Somebody hasn't read it or hasn't been part of that whole program over a period of time looks at it, and can see it totally differently. And that's really where we are. I accept that your New Freedom Council supports the police and everything else. A history of what makes this more understandable to you is, it really comes down to how do you share the costs? And way, way back when we formed between Shrewsbury and New Freedom, we did it on two factors, population and police time, and that worked for years and years and everything else. Where we got into trouble, or a learning curve, whichever way you want to say that, was when we had a municipality, not Shrewsbury, not New Freedom, but another unnamed municipality, that wanted to manipulate their police hours. So they would call up and various people on the council, or even citizens would call them and say, "I don't want to see any police cars in my jurisdiction, because that costs us money." Well, once you get down to that, it's almost like having a police department that's going to be an ambulance. They're going to sit in, in this case, in New Freedom's jurisdiction, and put all their thumbs, but then if this other jurisdiction needs police service, oh, then send it over. I want it right away. But until then, until I have that demand, I don't want to be paying for those costs. So we went through that for many years, and some of that still exists from time to time. So the issue is, how can smart people find some way to see to it that that's not what is occurring, and that you allow the Chief of Police to decide where to send the police cars? The criminals don't care about our jurisdictions. They don't know where New Freedom ends, or Stewartstown begins, or anything else. So you want the chief to have that freedom of concentrating his police time and his patrols where they're going to do the most good, where the activity requires them. So we finally came up, and we've had several changes to the formula, but three years ago, we came up with the idea of your demand for police services would be based on your demand of what the officers needed to do, not counting, although we track the hours, so everybody knows your time. But we felt that the, the way to do it is on demand. So that, to us, was the best way to define it. Now, Andy, I was here when we had the murder and the runaway train and all those things, but under the current, we, we track incidents. So even the runaway train or the murder would have been one incident, not tracking the hours as far as it goes billed to you. So an incident is two things. Either one of our citizens calls 911 and says, "I need the police." There's no argument there. That's a demand for police services. The other case that occurs is if a police officer's out there on patrol, and he's something, he sees something that's going wrong, and he feels that he's going to take action about it, then that too is an incident. It wasn't instigated by 911, it was instigated by the officer who's doing his job and patrolling our territories. So that is how we've tracked incidents. And Donna just showed me how, that was all set back in 2018, when we talked about having a average. Now, again, Andy's right when he says, "Oh geez, you could have one incident," or, you know, maybe you've got an arsonist and he creates 15 fires in a matter of two weeks, and suddenly your incidents are going up. We did work out that the right way to do it, so that we all have an acceptable or somewhat predictable cost for each budget year, is to do a three-year running average. And folks, that was discussed in 2018. It's not anything new. In 2018 and 2019, we didn't have the, the data. It wasn't easy to go back and retroactively come up with what those numbers of incidents would be. But since we came onto that plan, it's been reported to you month after month after month what your incidents are. And the incidents are what shows is either your residents or your, our officers in your jurisdiction have to respond and take police activity. Now, there's a long list, at one time I think it was as many as 52, different examples of what is an incident and what is not an incident. And I'm not going to, I don't even have all of that stuff memorized, but it's irritable. It's simple to understand that either you ask for it, or the police officer sees that you need it, whether you ask for it or not, he has to take action. So that is what we define as incidents. And that incident is what is meant to be the determination of your PPU's. Now, when we were sold that bill of goods, and I really do mean we were sold a bill of goods on, on PPU's, they always gave us that example, well, you know, maybe New Freedom wants more hours and Shrewsbury doesn't, so you can transfer some of your PPU's over to somebody else. But we haven't had that, and I don't expect we're ever going to see that. Now, if New Freedom feels they want more patrol time, you know, under the current system, you can ask for more patrol time, and if the chief feels it's justified, he's going to give it to you.
Buck, I'm going to have, let me just interrupt you for one second. We don't have the time, or the patience, to go through and talk about everything that's happened since 2017, or 20, yeah, 2017, when the IGA was written. We only have one, one issue, and that is, we don't know what our PPU's are going to be for next year. We, we don't know what they're going to be the following year, or the, you know, but the IGA defines a way that we come up with a budget number. That way that we define it is to take a three-year average, and then for two years, we lock in a certain number of PPU's. Nobody here expected to even be discussing PPU's this year, because it was 15.16 last year, and by contract, it's 15.16 this year. The Finance Committee, as far as I can tell, and please, jump in, Kim, what, why, I don't understand why we're at this point. And we're, we can talk all night about this, but it's a contractual issue. If I lease a building from you for two years, and are, we agree that we're going to pay so much a month, then halfway through the lease, you decide you want to change the lease, you're breaking the lease. So we have a contract in place that tells us what our PPU's are for 2022. We just want to follow the contract.
Right. Andy, where we're, again, you read something, you think it made sense to you. The two-year comment is at the end of the paragraph, and it was only inserted so that until we got the three-year data, until we could get all the data for three years, that was what we did until we got the data.
Judge Judy wouldn't agree with you. Judge Judy would say, it says two years, twice.
Our solicitor, I don't know whether Peter Ruth has come in behind me, I thought he was supposed to be here tonight, our solicitor, and we discussed this, and we've discussed, I mean, this is not a new plan. We've been talking about this for all these three years. The two years was just until we got the data. Well, we now have the data, and the data shows how much demand you've had versus all the other municipalities. And that's how we break down the cost, the cost sharing of the budget.
Then you need to write a new IGA that says that, because your current IGA says that every two years, your, the Chief of Police is going to tell me what my PPU's are for the next two years. And I'm not going to sit here, I mean, I'm done, I, I don't, I, does anyone have any comments to make on this?
Well, one comment that I'll make, I'll make is, you know, we've already kind of given some leadway where it says, "Three fiscal years' worth of data, incident reports." Well, there's three years, in my mind, would have been 18, 19, 20 fiscal year from January through December. We've already given in and said, "Okay, you want to go 36 months, 36 months from September now through August." Okay? That's not what it says. It says a fiscal year. And that, that creates a situation too, because if we would have gone back and done 18, 19, 20, and accepted your PPU's, those PPU's would have, would have changed once again and wouldn't be, what is it, 15.4 this year. So we've, we've given in a little bit here with that 36-month period. It's not our fault that the Finance Committee, who was supposed to have a budget ready September 1st, didn't have one until December.
We've been promised a new IGA now, since, before I took office.
I'm not with the IGA Committee, and I agree. They, they meet frequently, and we haven't seen that change. But there's nobody on the Police Commission, your representatives as well, that haven't understood that we've been working toward that three-year average for three years. And now suddenly we're back, and yes, it's poorly written. But to, to your point, Kim, the, the reason we were suggesting to go back to ending it at the end of August is that then, as we sit down and work through the budget, there's one unknown that has now been solidified. Everybody knows what your percentage is going to be, so that takes out one of the unknowns. You've had 90, probably 96, 97% of our budget for two months, three months, whatever it's been. The only thing that's bearable for us is we do not get the police liability, you know, the cars, the officers and all those. We don't get that data until mid-December. That's the only reason we can't say, "This is it, the final budget." Now, we've put in numbers, and we've put in a condition that if we're wrong in our estimates for the insurance liability, then we will take whatever that difference is out of our balance or out of our reserve.
They're not arguing the police budget. We accept, we accept the police budget, we accept the $40,590.63. I mean, that's, we accept that.
Well, it was discussed at our meeting, Kim, you were there, that our solicitors are the mindset that if you approve the budget, you're also approving the number of PPU's that that three-year running average dictates to us. So that's, that's-
That's not what it says in the contract.
The budget, the budget?
They're, they're separate. I, I, you know, I mean, you're right. Would I have written it this way? Absolutely not. I, I, this, this makes no sense to me whatsoever. But it is the contract, and it's what you, what you have to follow. So if, if people get together and they sign a contract, all right, I, you know, let's, let's bring this up again during the, the police, the budget discussion that we're going to have when Kim brings up his report. Buck, you're welcome to stay, but-
I will. And I appreciate you listening to me.
Yeah, I mean, unless it's like-
Where we're going and what we're trying to do. We need cooperation between all municipalities, and-
I agree.
This is where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment from anyone else? Okay. Approval of minutes.
I have a quick question. I was marked as being absent, but I was on the phone.
On the phone, yes. Yeah, that needs correcting.
With that revision, I make a motion that we approve both of November 8th and November 17th Borough Council's 28 minutes.
I have a motion that we approve the minutes, the two sets of minutes from the budget and the regular meeting. Okay, I have a second from Burnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? My vote is aye.
Treasurer's report.
Andrew Whitman, who, who is, excuse me, customer in Burnell?
Customer, that's for the treatment plant.
Andrew, is there a fee anywhere in here for cleaning of the community center?
Yeah, that is under, um-
Is that like a crystal, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's for this building and the community center?
No, that's just for the community center.
Just the community center? Okay. All right. Um, well, I'm going to report. Go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll hit that in my mayor's.
You can actually bring it up now, because if we're going to approve paying it.
Well, apparently, there's, you and I have discussed, there's been a little bit of a cleaning problem with the, with the rooms upstairs, of course. They haven't been used in a year and a half. Lyons has recently started using that room. They used it one month, and unfortunately, we have three individuals that have allergies, asthma, and phazema, and as soon as they walk in that room, they close up. One got sick, had to leave. The dust accumulation, apparently nobody took care of that. There, I think, is also a vent issue that you and I discussed. I think perhaps we need to get the company in to take a look at cleaning the ductwork. If you look at our vents here, they're pretty clean. You look at the ones up at the community center, they're black. So when those vents are kicking on, that, whatever it is, is flying out and apparently annoying some people's health. So I'd like us to see if we can't get somebody in there to take a look at that, or at least get those rooms cleaned. It smell, it even smells musty when you walk in, in there. Nobody's fault, it hasn't been used for a year and a half. I know downstairs, apparently, has been cleaned, but that's, that's something that they've brought up to me. They will not use that room until they feel it's safe to go in. I'm just asking, I'll-
I mean, the, the cleaning is of the common areas. Anyone who rents or uses the building, or uses their portion, their room, they're responsible for cleaning that room. And the seniors are using that, the kitchen, the laundry room for kitchen, or for lunch every day.
Are they using that for lunch currently?
Yes.
Well, I've got news for you, I wouldn't eat there.
Three days a week.
The dust on those window sills is, I mean, you take your hand over it, it's, and like I said, the vents in that room, I didn't realize that they were still, that they were doing lunches up there currently, but I think it needs to be looked at. Please. And if we have to get somebody, God knows when, those vents have been clean glassed, sitting there idle for all that time. I know it's going to be an expense that we don't count on incurring, but I think it's important. Thank you. Thanks, Keith.
Any other questions on the treasurer's report? I entertain a motion.
I take the motion that we accept the treasurer's report for November 2021.
I take the motion. Second by Andrew. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
My vote is aye. Okay. Probably should apologize now, because this is probably going to be a long meeting. We have a lot of ordinances that were advertised and we need to approve. I'm going to start off with a couple of things. First of all, Donna, we know Donna's resigned, she's put in a lot of years, her expertise at the police department, oh, what, you were going to say something?
No, but she really didn't.
She didn't want to-
She's very modest, and she really just would like to boil out the limber.
Okay.
But, thank you. Say, "Thank you."
Thank you. And also, Anne Shima, Dr. Shima is going to be leaving. We thank her for her years of service. Someone is going to have to learn to be a wordsmith and put together motions, because I think she, she's the only one who can phrase what we want to say succinctly. Also, thank her for EMS and Fire Committee, working with Todd at Shrewsbury Township, and I would hope that you would consider staying on in that capacity. Your depth of knowledge is far surpasses most of those in, in, in the community, so, so I would hope you would consider doing that. Okay. The next nice thing that we have, we have, Myra's not here, okay. Wonder if she's coming, and we should wait a minute. Well, we could just, we could just do it again if she shows up, but we had a great first parade, for a Christmas parade. We have had just tons of comments about how wonderful it was. I got to be in it, it was fun, not too cold. The Borough Council has written a resolution of respect that I would like Borough Council to vote on tonight. It is, says, "Whereas the Borough of New Freedom," well, basically, it just says we're allowed to do this, but basically, the, the important thing is, "Whereas local government is dependent upon the goodwill of its businesses and citizens to enhance the spirit of community and belonging and to shape and influence the youth of the community, and whereas the coming together of its citizens in peace and harmony to celebrate a town event should be the goal of every municipality, and whereas Myra Gillis and Gillis sponsored, organized, and conducted a Christmas parade to the benefit of our citizens, local businesses, and the Borough of New Freedom. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Borough of New Freedom that the Borough Council and the Mayor of New Freedom commend and salute Myra Gillis and Gillis for their exemplary citizenship and community spirit in sponsoring and conducting New Freedom's first Christmas parade, with a heartfelt thank you from New Freedom Borough and its citizens." And this will become a record of, of New Freedom Borough, and it's signed by the Borough Manager, the Council President, and the Mayor.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution of respect.
I'll second that one.
Okay. I have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. And I guess I'll put it, I'll put it up there, people can look at it if they want to. Put it up there? Just on the table. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's okay. Yeah, okay. So we discussed that. We had our first meeting with the Shrewsbury, with Shrewsbury Township and the Rec Director Study Committee. There's going to be a survey coming out to the people in the community, so that they can see what they want the Rec Director and the Rec, Rec Board to do. Our second meeting is coming up, I think, early January, right? Or is it late December? For the interview?
It's Monday.
Monday, okay. So we have a, I have a meeting Monday. So that'll, that'll happen on Monday, and then we are teaming with Shrewsbury Township on the Rec Director, and hopefully, this will, this will be a really great thing for both, both municipalities, and maybe even lead to a, a regional recreation program, which we will be able to get additional funding by, by teaming with other people. We also had a meeting with NCR. It was primarily about parking, so we, it was a very amicable meeting. Everybody had great ideas, and we're going to start using Savvy Citizen to alert the residents for special events. We're going to move the vendors and the band into the parking lot, or from the parking lot into the park, so that the parking lot isn't used up by the vendors, and we're going to have signs on the street to direct people to the municipal lot. So hopefully, it'll free up some parking on South Front Street and in the municipal parking lot. So that was a good meeting. We also had an excellent meeting about sewage. Not a great subject, but still. So I, it was a great meeting. We met with Shrewsbury Township and Hopewell Township- was a great meeting, uh, we met with, uh, Shrewsbury Township and Hopewell Township and Shrews, Shrewsbury Borough, uh, to discuss their, uh, their future needs, and we decided that Hopewell Township probably needed somewhere between six hundred, uh, five hundred and six hundred EDUs, Shrewsbury Township needs about eight hundred, and we also determined that we could probably bring the plant up to speed and not apply for additional licensing capacity, so that's gonna be worked on, and our next meeting on that is going to be in January, and, um, really, I mean, the, the, the only way that we can keep our taxes down is to increase development and let businesses in the area. We've got a brewery coming into Railroad, we've got a brewery, a brew pub coming into New Freedom, those things keep our tax base up and our, and our, uh, our income coming into the borough up, so that's, it's a really good thing. Okay.
Mr. President, hey, don't forget Railroad was at that meeting, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm gonna make sure they.
Thank you, yeah, very much, yes, and, uh, New Freedom was represented by Dennis Arpin and Burnell and myself, and Andy Schaefer was there, so it was, it was a very good meeting. Uh, I'm gonna just run down, uh, since this is kind of the end of a, uh, segment for, uh, for council, and we will reorganize in January, I wanted to run down what council has done for you, it's kinda like a State of the Union address. First of all, we hired a superbly qualified Borough Manager, and he's identified and applied for four point one million dollars in grants, he's also got us savings and co-stars uh, through Salt Web, he's designed the website and built that, and our delinquencies, uh, are, are way down, they were approaching a hundred K, and now they're down to, I think about twenty, twenty something? Yeah, so, uh, we've increased our level of communications with citizens through Savvy Citizen, we've increased communications with the new website that was designed by Andrew, uh, we're also saving money by running the borough, uh, website through the Borough Office instead of running it through, uh, an outside agency, and we've also saved probably about fifteen thousand dollars in implementation, because it's being done by the Borough Office. This will also give us more timely posts. Uh, we asked the Mayor and Eric Arerik to, uh, be on an IGA committee, and they brought back, uh, great information to us and helped us get along better with, um, Glen Rock and Shrewsbury Borough and the other municipalities, I think we, we've done a great job with the, uh, Street Sweeper in Glen Rock, we've looked at teaming up and sharing expenses on some of the equipment that we need, so that's a good, a good thing. We've teamed with Shrewsbury Township in hiring the Rec Director, uh, that'll be a cost savings and a grant, we've, uh, got, uh, annailed the opportunity for more and varied programs and opportunities and events at Marge Good Fellow Park and the Community Center, and like I said before, watch for a survey coming to you, uh, for, to get your, the citizens' input on that. Uh, we've updated the job descriptions and the personnel manual, we encourage public works, uh, training, and Jake completed his water training, and that's going to save us about thirty-six thousand dollars a year by dropping an outside contract that, for, backup for our water treatment. Um, we've managed through COVID with little or no impact, I think, to services, we've done, done a good job, the Borough Office has done a great job with that, we contracted out the grass cutting to free up public works for stormwater management and water service, and that's working well. Uh, we started recording and posting online video of borough meetings, uh, we've got a bid, and we've twice discussed live streaming, which did not get passed, and which I got dinged on again by the, um, Borough Manager, because we're having to use this, and if we got the, uh, the system in place where we had the double TV screen, we would have a lot, a lot easier time of it, but we did upgrade our, um, our, um, infrastructure for, uh, internet, uh, so we are actually set to, uh, to go ahead with that system if, if, uh, we can get it, get it passed. We, uh, updated our account, accounting software to QuickBooks for transparency, clarity, and to aid in fiscal responsibility, we established fund balance tracking, which might not mean a lot to everybody, but it's, it, basically, it tells us where exactly our money's going, and we established spending authority limits for the Borough Manager, and, uh, we've done all of this to ensure that the borough remains financially viable and sustainable for future generations. We joined SKEMA in emergency management, and our mayor is the head of that, we refilled the billing clerk position, which decreased the, uh, delinquent water, sewer, and trash by sixty-five percent, saving almost forty thousand dollars. We established the HR Committee, we established a property maintenance ordinance to address residents' complaints, we installed a sound system in council chambers, and we purchased the video camera, we provided and installed thirteen and over playground to replace and enhance the equipment that we removed during the park renovation, we joined PSAB, we actually joined PSAB Plus, so we have a little bit more access to some of the, um, Pennsylvania, Association of Borough information, we approved public works building renovation to extend the longevity of the building, so that we can, um, make sure that we, we can, uh, continue operations out of the same space that we have, we approved and obtained funding for a well-received concert series now taken over by REC, and that'll be happening again this summer, uh, LED streetlights to save money and provide better security and driving lighting, we refinanced our long-term debt to save money on interest, we rejoined Southern York County Regional Planning Commission, we upgraded our New Freedom Borough infrastructure, gas, water, and roads, we passed a res- resolution pledging New Freedom Borough Council's support and defense of citizens' constitutional rights under the Bill of Rights, with, let, Burnell led that effort, and New Freedom Borough has taken the lead to help other municipalities determine sewage needs for future growth, and that's going to be very important. Uh, we're planning major projects for twenty twenty-two, the slider tank, uh, public works renovation, the street stormwater, uh, third street water line, all with no tax increase, because the council works as a team, and because we have budget responsibility, and we all budget responsibly, and I think this is a really good team, and I'm, I'm honored to work with all of you. So that was me patting ourselves on the back.
Andy, one, one thing you did mention is the, the cameras that we installed in the park.
I did leave that out, didn't I?
I was waiting.
Yeah, I mean.
Did you mention the volunteer EMS, um, rebate for, that we passed the ordinance?
Oh, yeah, that, was that in, I guess that was under our watch, I was, we, yeah, we did.
That was definitely under our watch, because I pushed for that.
Yeah, that was EMS and fire, we passed the, uh, rebate, and actually, I wrote a software program for them to use, um, and I'm helping them with that, and that's, uh, that's actually a good thing, hopefully that'll get our volunteerism, because that's such a huge, I mean, you know, think about it, I mean, if we had, you know, like they do in Baltimore City, where everyone's a paid fireman or a paid EMS, I mean, it would just cost us a lot in tax dollars, so getting volunteers in is just a very important thing. And that is all I have, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
I will remind, please, members of council, and we are going to, uh, as Andy said, become members of PSAB Plus, I would encourage you to please take advantage of that organization, they are a wealth of knowledge, information, you can pick up the phone, call anyone on their staff and get answers, but also their webinars are invaluable, especially coming into some new, a new year, uh, if you aren't signed up currently, get together with Andrew, he can help you sign up, you're gonna need, you know, your, your, um, login information, and he can help you to do that, I think, uh, I, I, I'm, I know I'm probably the most active when it comes to that, I think I've got forty-seven credits this year with, or since I came into office with PSAB, and, uh, they have helped me tremendously, please take advantage of that, uh, and we, uh, we do have a conference coming up at Hershey, which, uh, I'm glad to say I went to the PSAB Winter Festival, I, I wish some of you would've gone along, but I won a half free, um, convention payment for my convention fee for Hershey, and, uh, I think it's June or July this year, so I'm looking forward to that.
Taxable benefit.
What's that?
Taxable benefit.
That's a taxable benefit, yeah, no, because you have to pay me back for my expenses, the, the other expenses when I go, I did, did discuss with you the Lyons Room, we're gonna take care of that, uh, Southern Regional Police, um, do you want to give a brief synopsis of the meeting, and then I will give, uh, some other figures? That Mr. President has asked before?
I don't have much, but I'd like to reach out to Peter Ruth, who is our solicitor, he is at Dallas Town for the meeting, and he said he's going to try to get here, um, I'm hoping he can make it, uh, the commission voted unanimously to enter into a collaborative agreement with Logos Works, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit that works to get grants and other funds, um, for the member departments' use, currently there are twenty different departments throughout York that are already affiliated with Logos Works, and, and we will now become one of them. Uh, as Buckett mentioned, we did vote to approve the twenty twenty-two budget, realizing that we're still missing the liability insurances, and that we haven't established the PPU's, and I just have to say one thing about the PPU's, and I know we're sick of it, um, I provided a, a document to you, Andy, and the Mayor, that was from, uh, Mike Sharkey, who was the president, I'm sorry, he's the chairman of the IGA Committee, so this was back in twenty eighteen, and it has language in there saying that the IGA has got to get together and provide a mechanism describing how the prior three-year PPU usage should be calculated, it doesn't say fiscal year in the IGA, it just says three-year, our solicitor has said, that's ambiguous, you don't really know what, how, what, you say this three years, is it calendar years, is it fiscal years? The Finance Committee decided what made the most sense and was the fairest to each municipality was to use the, the three most recent years, even if it was part of a year, and because we recognize we're supposed to have the budget, uh, to you guys in September or October, I think we started it from three years, go back August three years to September, thinking that that would be the most reasonable to everybody, as far as the fact about the two years, even in twenty eighteen, the IGA Committee was trying to make a change to the IGA, which apparently takes an act of God, that says this should be done annually, the whole idea about the PPU's is so that all four members are paying their fair portion, you don't go back one year, because that's not fair if somebody hadn't heard of that year, you go back three years to even out those ups and those downs, every other municipality, Glen Rock is now here, um, Shrewsbury and Stewartstown understands this, and doesn't, and gets past the fact that the IGA says two years, only because at that time they did not have the data, everybody else is in agreement, including myself, that what we came up with is the fairest to all municipalities, it makes the most sense, I think we ended up paying twenty thousand more this year, and our PPU's go up to the, whatever it was, the point seven four, um, so that's just my two cents, I know I'm, I'm all up there, but if, everybody else agrees that we should use the three most recent years, even though it's part of a year, and that it should be calculated every year in fairness to all of the members, I know we've had problems sometimes where people said they couldn't afford to pay that, but that's the fairest to everybody, and that's my opinion, that's all I have.
I agree with you a hundred percent, I think that is the fairest way to do it, I think that is the way it should be done, it's just not contractual.
Well, that, that's where, if Peter comes and shows up, Mayor, you were at that meeting, he's a lawyer, he can speak much more eloquently than I, and he's saying that you don't have to do it every two years, that what, what the IGA says, it can be calculated every year, I mean, you were at the meeting, Roy, you were at the meeting, that's right.
Well, he said, what, what his statement was, what his statement was, was it is very ambiguous, those were his words, I think, exactly.
And he, he argued us, he argued recommending us use a new PPU's for this year, I mean, if he were here, he would. As he did. Bruce, you were there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, and we, and we agree, you know, IGA Committee agrees that we need to do that, unfortunately, we tried to do something based on incidents, and it took us about three, four months, and we really thought that we were gonna come to, uh, some terms with that, Daryl supplied a lot of hours on the computer and a lot of, a lot of spreadsheets trying to get us into those incidence reports, and it just was not going to work, we knew it wasn't gonna work, it, it, it pretty much doubled Glen Rock's, what Glen Rock would have been paying, when we took the PPU system and the, against the incidents, and what was designated as an incident, we had to come down through, and we said patrol does not designate as an incident, which it did before, um, and it, it just, it wasn't feasible to use that, it's just, we probably would've lost two municipalities in doing it that way, but, uh, our, our difference in, in costs, you know, for New Freedom and going this way, uh, is fifty thousand dollars, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is a lot of, a lot of money, over last year, um, nineteen thousand seven, or one million, nine hundred seventy-five dollars, five hundred and forty-six cents is the total, after we pull out the school districts, that's basically what.
I also just wanna point out that, as you said, if we figured it on incidents, Glen Rock would go up substantially, fifty-some thousand dollars.
Not this year, so.
No.
No, based on the, based on the previous intent of the IGA over that three-month period looking at incidents.
And I, and I also wanna point out, especially for the citizens of New Freedom, that I would expect that all of the member municipalities would agree that we should go the way we're going now, because New Freedom's the only one municipality that has to pay more, everybody else pays less.
That's because your incidents went up, that's because the PPU's went up, because your community grew, because you had more calls than anybody else.
Because you used the thirty-six months instead of two, uh, three fiscal years.
Well, you were in agreement in the IGA Committee and on this committee that it was a three-year rolling average, and you decided, two months ago, that no, it wasn't, it was gonna be two years.
I don't think we.
I must've missed that meeting.
No, even there.
Well, I think you, you missed the first part of this meeting, where we pointed out that twice it says in the IGA that we're supposed to change the PPU's every two years.
No, that, and as Donna has said, if, if Peter Rick was here, he would tell you, it's a three-year rolling average.
That's on incidents counting.
And when Glen Rocks went up, they recoup their money by their rebate, and the same thing's gonna happen with you here.
Well, maybe not.
And I can't help it if you had more incidents here, and to pull the, to pull the game that you're trying to pull now is just, it's ridiculous.
The game we're pulling is like, this is what the contract says, and I'll go over the figures with you, if we stick with fifteen point one six PPU's, New Freedom's cost for twenty twenty-two would be six hundred and fifteen thousand, three fifty-four, okay? This all, Shrewsbury would be six sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, Glen Rock would be three thirty-two, which would still be lower, Stewartstown would be three sixty-one, and that still comes out with the one million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollar, um, budget, you know, which we got, I'm gonna say again, last minute, so if everyone agrees to use those two years, and, uh, right here, I, I've got it right here, it says twenty-one to twenty-three recommended, with two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty incidents, twenty-one to twenty-three, that's twenty-one and twenty-two, that's two years, it even says it on the top of the sheet that we were given from the Budget Committee.
And we are agreeing on the IGA, and you were there.
The IGA has not passed anything yet. The IGA has not passed, we haven't even presented a draft, so that really has no bearing, that's, the problem is, is you're, where still is a. That's, the problem is, is we're still using the 2017.
We're still using the, the 2017 IGA is what the current IGA is. And that's what Mr. President is, our President is saying. So our solicitor has some insight because he spoke with Peter today.
Yeah, Peter Ruth actually talked to me today. I don't think he's coming for it. That's what he said to me. That's right. So what Peter actually, what he said to me, and I tend to agree, is at best, the agreement's ambiguous as drafted, okay? Because it, it does say two years in one place, but there's other places where it really suggests it should be a one-year rolling average.
One year.
Three-year rolling. Three-year rolling average, but it changes every year because it says in another place, you can't, basically, you have to be obligated to pay for your PPUs you need for the year. So we have these competing two-year versus three-year and then it should change every year or every two years. That's, that's what he said. What Peter may have explained to you was about parole evidence, that you would look back and see what the intent was, since the document's unclear, there's a term, there's a, there's a theory in law that we go back to look outside the contract for corners to see what the intent was at the time. And I think that's what Buck was trying to explain earlier, was is the intent at the time was, they didn't have three years of data, so we had to start with something, so you put two years in there. Arguably, what it should have said was, is for the first two years, we're going to use two years and after that, we're going to do a three-year rolling average. Now, I will tell you, Mayor, that most intergovernmental agreements that depend on a budget to be approved by municipalities runs on a fiscal year because you have to start that budget process before the end of the year so the municipality can fund, they can consider their budget and then use that. So generally, you have a rolling 36 year, 36 months, so you can actually get full three years of data in to have a complete for both our budget and their budget. I know the agreement doesn't say that necessarily, but that's generally how it works so that we can all meet our artificial or legal budget requirements for a borough or township.
And I think our council has agreed to go with that 36 month from September through August. And the new IGA, and Mr. President, you and I have talked about changing that to coincide with the fiscal year of the school district, which is what, July through June?
At least there would be an actual fiscal year. There are only, there are only two fiscal years.
We don't know. There could be a time when Southern Regional or Southeastern decides that they.
Well, you can declare whatever you want.
They want to do PPUs instead of, you know, paying what they're paying now. They want, they want to be an associate member, we're looking at other memberships, associate memberships in addition to municipal membership.
Isn't this a new point? Hasn't our budget been published?
It has, but it's been published at a higher level then.
We always go higher because we don't want, like, surprises, which we've got.
We didn't have all the data, so we put it, we put a number in that was a little bit higher than what our PPU requirement was so that if something came back, whenever the police approved their budget and we could cover that.
I will say this, though. We, we did discuss also the question of what, what it means with the budget and what steps New Freedom takes. I agree with him that if you don't, if you don't agree to pay the PPUs, you can't approve the budget. New Freedom can, because you're not agreeing to fund the budget. So you have to have, you have the expense side, you have the revenue side. That's like passing a budget for the borough and not passing your tax levy, right? Because then you can't fund it. So there's a default in the agreement that says if you don't pass it, then it defaults to last year and then it's up to the other folks to take their actions. So I, I think that's, that's probably where you're at this evening, is you have to decide whether you want to fund the budget as proposed or you don't. I mean, you either agree with it or you don't agree with it. I think that's where we're at. I don't think there's, well, we agree with it, but we're not going to pay our portion. I, I don't know that you can say that legally because, well, you can say it legally, but it could be challenged because where's that leave the rest of the, the folks? Because they have to make up the difference.
How far away are, Buck, how far away are they from actually having a new IGA that we can review and approve?
I have no idea, sir.
What did they talk to the committee?
I mean, they, Matt, they, they keep talking, but no, there's never been that correct change.
I will tell you that Peter indicated he's provided language to the IGA that addresses this issue, to have it the three-year and it changes every year. So that's what he told me, I, I have not seen it.
Although I spoke earlier, let me just bring one other factor back. Words can talk forever and, you know, no disparity there, but, you know, you can argue that wording from either side. What you really have to get back to, you've already said to support the police, you want to work with everybody. Think, if you, if you play the game here of changing the PPUs, where does that other money go? You're asking the other municipalities to make up that difference. But we know from the three-year rolling average, you've had that demand. So if you know that's what you needed and that's the bill, please pass it. It's, it's that simple. When you say send it to someone else, if you know.
The three-year. I show for the three years that we would owe 615,000. I'm not, that.
That's the reg, that's what the current PPUs.
The current PPUs, according to Buck's figures, we would owe our shares 639,000. That's a big difference.
24K.
24, well, 49, $49,000 difference over last year. Last year was 589.
No, 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 but it's from this year, for this year, you can't go back to last year. For this year, it'd be 24K up from what we, what we've got, right?
Six, yeah, six, 615 versus six.
639.
689, or 589.
Not last year.
Oh, this year.
639 is the.
Yeah, 639 and we're saying if we use the 15.16, our share would be 615.
So it's 24K we're talking about. Is that right? 24, is that what I had?
Right. It's 638, I know it's the actual windows.
All right, why don't you finish your mayor's report?
Okay. All right. Rose EMS, I think you have a list for calls of service. We're also working on some other numbers so that we can, do you have that there? I think you have it. Right? Yeah. So that, that shows the percentage that, of calls that are going to New Freedom. We do have some members of the EMS here that I wanted to, they were so kind enough to come to our meeting. If you would stand and introduce yourself, Marcia first, please.
Hi, I'm Marcia Barvin, the EMS chief of Rose EMS.
My name is Jim Boston, I'm the deputy fire chief.
Yeah, I'm Mike, you're a president-elect, Rose Fire Company.
So these are, these are new officials, I've been working very closely with them. They've been very, very pliable. We're looking forward to being able to do some, some new and, and good things. They all have wonderful intentions for every borough, but, you know, being stationed in New Freedom, they're, they're, they're looking out for our citizens and we're trying to figure out some ways that we can make sure that our citizens are, are, are taken care of on a, on a first-need basis. As of, I think, the last seven numbers, New Freedom, out of all the EMS calls, we were 17%. And the problem is, we've got one paramedic for what, four, five municipalities, Marcia?
That's right.
Yeah. We need, we need to do better. We need to do better for our, our people. If our, our EMS is on an ALS call and they need the paramedic and they're over in Stewartstown and we've got a cardiac arrest over here, all we can hope is that somebody around here can do CPR for 20 minutes till Jacobus gets here. And to me, I'm sorry, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. I think we can do better, we need to do better and working with Marcia, I think we're going to do better. So I thank you all for being here. I thank you for your service, your dedication. You've had a hell of a last year and a half, let me tell you, and we all appreciate it. I don't want anybody, I'm not going to give numbers or anything, but I don't want anybody to think COVID's over because I've got a pager, I see what goes out, what the ambulance calls are, and they will attest that COVID ain't over. So again, I encourage you, get your, get your vaccine, get your booster if you don't. So be it. I really think, are missed calls on that sheet? I don't have it in front of me. I think we only had, we only had 42 missed calls in November and December. Am I correct?
October and.
October and November. And we had 42 missed calls. She and I are working on calls from Baltimore. There, we want to look and see what we can do about that. There were quite a few calls that, that came, went to Baltimore, but I want to see how many calls are coming from Baltimore into New Freedom. I think it's probably less and less all the time that Baltimore is, is consistently helping. Am I correct?
I don't see, you know, I don't have enough data yet to compare who's going where at which timeframe. The only thing I can express is that the call volume in the general area is increasing. COVID does have something to do with it and like you said, we have to find a, a better way to serve our community and work with the surrounding areas to adjust the issues that they're having, which falls back on us and we have to pick up their areas.
Right. And I, I will say Thursday, Thursday, we have a meeting with the billing company. We've been trying to get that for a while. I will be attending that because we're, we're trying to get the accounts receivables down and try to find some ways that we can, we can attempt to recoup some of those losses. It's tough, it's tough with Medicaid patients and we've got a lot of them down here. When Medicaid pays $68 for an ambulance, what, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you, have you invited Todd or Ann to that?
We just, I just found, we just talked about this today because they're having the meeting at 6:30, the billing company, that's the only time they could come. I just found out about it. She invited me to be there because she knows I have some, some specific questions about their billing and about their, the way they go after delinquent accounts, which is.
I think, I think if, if you're going to have that meeting, I think it's imperative that, that Todd and possibly Ann go to that meeting. I mean, that, they, they.
They invited me, so I, that's.
That's fine. That's not a problem.
The reason I'm saying is that Todd has been a huge proponent for trying to collect those, those delinquent billings and I think that he would be, if you don't invite him now, we're probably going to have to have another meeting later. If you can kill two birds with one stone.
Yes, sir. I confirmed the meeting this morning and reached out right away. It was last minute because the company's home from my address, so yes, by all means.
What was the date and time again? Thursday, 6:30.
Yes, sir. And I'm not being called upon to the committee report yet, but the EMS meeting, the BCD, is going to be at 2:30 on Thursday, the 21st, or the, I'm sorry, long date. 14, 15, 16.
16.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. Yeah, that's, and we're talking this Thursday also. And that is at 6:30 and that'll be up at the station.
2:30 is the, it's in Shrewsbury Town, at their building, and then 6:30 is the billing at our station.
At your station, correct.
At the station, okay.
Are you comfortable with that? Because I know this was not planned and you hadn't.
No, absolutely. We want, we want to work as a team, so absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Baptism by fire.
Yeah, baptism by fire. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, seriously.
That's. All right, that's all I have. I'm, you know what, I'm, I'm sorry. Sir.
I was just going to ask if you had any further questions for the fire department EMS? We were going to dismiss ourselves.
No, thank you. I know you're very busy and I'm glad you could stay as long as you did. Didn't have to lose you during the meeting and I know we, we talked, you were going to be here as long as you could. Appreciate it very much. You lucked out?
Yeah, for now, thank you.
Thank you again. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the three-year average PPUs at a level at our total commitment of $639,000. And I'm going to put a caveat on it that if we do not have an IGA that we've had time to review prior to the next budget cycle, that we are going to follow the current IGA and go with every two years.
Thank you, sir.
That's what, what I'm going to propose. I think it's fair. I think we've been waiting way too long for an IGA. I think, I think that's, that's my proposal. Just sitting here thinking, I haven't talked to anybody about it, obviously.
Let's go second. Very good.
Well, you can't make, you can't make a motion.
No, I can make a motion.
Robert's rules.
No, I know.
He's a, or a council member.
What was the, the timeframe for the IGA?
I think it has to be before the next budget cycle, which would mean that by, the next budget cycle starts September 1st. So I think it gives them nine, eight months, nine months to come up.
Two years.
Yeah, I mean, it's been, it's just been two years.
Two years that I know.
Yeah, it's been, yeah, since before us.
I'd like to add another caveat, too, since we're talking about caveats. And it, it seems to me that it's, it's pretty important, obviously, to count incidents correctly. Mayor gave an example where if we counted them one way, Glen Rock's, you know, cost would have been much higher. But I don't, and I'm not saying it's happening, but I don't, what I don't want to see is, you know, well, we look at incidents in various municipalities, they won't back into what is an incident. We got to agree on what an incident is and sharpen our pencil about that and I think that ought to go along with it.
Well, that'll be in the new IGA, I would hope.
I, I agree because right now, we're depending on, or we're dependent on what Chief says or Daryl says is an incident.
There's a clearly, I don't have it, but there is a clearly defined thing and yes, it should be added into the PPU.
It's, it isn't within the IGA and that's what we were originally trying to do and that's where we got nailed because it just was not going to work. We thought for sure it would, it didn't and it set us back about three months in addition to COVID. So, you know, we had to cancel a lot of meetings.
And the IGA has to say something to the effect that we have a three-month rolling average per year. You know, I mean, as long as there's three Januaries and three Junes and three Sep, I don't really care where it falls. And then that, that would give us the three-month rolling average and it should be a yearly update. And then it's fair to everybody.
Thank you.
I agree.
And if it's up in one year after this first year, it'll even itself out.
I don't think that.
Right, yeah, exactly.
The IGA just went to meeting once a month. I think it might need, need to be reviewed and maybe go back to twice a month.
I agree, that was my suggestion. I don't know why we're going to meet once a month.
I know Peter's going to advertise it, so I don't know if he's advertised it yet or not.
Well, I mean, I can, I mean, nothing, nothing against anyone on the current IGA Committee, but if you set them to do a job and, and three years later, you haven't done it, maybe it's time to churn things up a little bit and.
Well, it wasn't as easy as we thought it was going to be.
I, I understand.
That's the truth.
I understand that.
It's not cut and dry.
No, but it almost seems to me like you lay out a framework and hand it to people like Peter and Davey and, and say, now put some words around this to make it work.
And we did the last couple of times with you.
Yeah, so I, I just.
Nobody shows up.
I mean, I don't want to, I, I don't want to put.
Yes, we do.
Well, I mean, no, nobody shows up. Like, I'm the only citizen that shows up.
Yeah, he's the only citizen that shows up.
Nobody shows, nobody shows up.
The police commission has been generous enough to allow us to have Peter Ruth for 10 hours. I think we've only used him for two. Now we're using him as we finalize this because we don't, didn't put all our eggs in one basket.
Yes, because we're not beaten at all in December.
Yes, because we're not meeting at all in December.
Right, we didn't meet, we didn't, November and December, we didn't meet at all. We had COVID where we couldn't meet. Um, it, it really threw, threw us off. You know, but I, I agree, I think we should, and on the back to Mike Sharkey, and, and I think hopefully Buck, you, it's, it's your mayor. I would hope that you would encourage him to, to go back to, to two meetings a month. I think it's needed.
It has to get done. I mean, it could even be, yeah. I mean, I'm not gonna tell you how to do it, but I mean, I...
It's a generous timeframe.
What do you think, Roland?
Roland's on, Roland's on, too.
I'm, I mean, the one thing you didn't bring up, Mayor, is at our last meeting, when we met this month, we're at the point where Mayor Sharkey is sending everything we have to Attorney Ruth, asking him to synthesize that so we can have something to send out to the municipalities, hopefully by January, February. So that was, those are the results of the last meeting. So that's, we hope to have something tangible, enhanced to municipalities within the next two months.
Yeah, I mean, you need a contract to file. I mean, that's, not that there won't be problems with it, I'm sure there will, but...
Well, it's, everybody's gotta agree with, agree with the, with the final IGA. And hopefully it'll be... We're, we're gonna, I think we need to use the KISS approach, you know, just keep it simple. It doesn't have to be complicated.
There's no saying, is there?
I know.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the budget at the six-thirty-nine level for the Police Department.
Six-thirty-eight, eight-oh-eight.
Thank you. And with the caveat that an IGA will be in place before the next budget cycle where we will revert back to the current IGA, which will be every two years. Nobody wants that, so it gives a little bit of motivation. Any other discussion? Old payman?
I'm fine.
Those? I go to sign.
Mayor, you said you wanted to give the two.
Yeah, are you ready?
Yeah.
If there's anyone here that really needs to leave that is here to discuss the police, you're more than welcome, or you can stay.
I can take a hint.
No, 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 please, you're, you're welcome to stay. We're just gonna do a...
Enough over reading. Thank you, Mr. Gafford.
Thank you for passing.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Stephen. Oh, hi, Dennis.
I'm hanging in.
Uh, we're going to recess for five minutes or so.
And we're, we are appreciative of the fact that we have leased the property of, of Weathersfield Road. And right now, we're in the process of doing, what is it, Andy? Environmental study and...
Yeah, they found wetlands.
Okay. We're, we're, we're in a, we're in a process of doing quite a few things. But what I'm here for is, I, I'd like to get the gate that is now presently at, at the front of Weathersfield Road moved back to where our lease facility is. That way, everybody who's gonna have to come up there now to do surveying and environment, park test, or whatever the heck it is they do, so they can get up there. The other thing is, um, I was approached that, I, I work for Southern School District. I'm a, what they call game help. I do timing for all their athletic events. I was in the PIA double A for, for twenty-five years, and they gotta, got somebody that knows what they're, what they're doing. But I was approached by the principal. They have a thing that, um, a requirement over at school that you have to do a community service project, I believe it is. Anyway, he approached me and asked me if he could build a shed on, on the property prior to us getting stuff there. And it, and I was really appreciative of it, because it's not gonna cost us anything. They're gonna do all the construction. And I told him, I said, I would, um, go to the borough and make sure. We will provide, apply for the permits and everything else like that. But I just, I, I put it all in a letter, and I just wanted to make sure I dropped it off. And right now, as it stands, um, we're, we're really hopeful that maybe next, this time next year, there will be appreciative work being done on that site, bringing us closer to. But our, our end date right now is April or May of 2023.
Correct.
But we're kinda hoping we can push that up a little bit closer and, and get the facility done before then.
Do you know how big the shed is?
The shed, I'm assuming it's gonna be within the, I believe, the last time I checked shed requirements, it was twenty, I mean, five hundred square, four, three hundred, five hundred square feet. Whatever the, whatever the requirement is for max shed, um, for, for that property, um, that's probably what we'll go for, because we're gonna have a lot of stuff that we're gonna have to move out of the post prior to it being built. And we're hoping to do some stories in there.
What's the size that wouldn't overtax, like?
I, I hadn't, I, I, I live in Shrewsbury Township, and I had a next-door neighbor who put a shed up at one time, and the requirements were really strange. That it could not be any higher than, than his, his permanent building on, on the property.
Yeah.
And I believe it's five hundred square feet.
Yeah, we're, we're...
So it's thirty by twenty, I think, twenty by, or twenty...
Why don't we check with Wade?
Yeah, we'll check with Wade and, um, and about the permits and whatnot.
I, I, I just wanted to bring it up and, and make everybody aware of it, so...
Can I get a copy of the letter for Wade?
Yes, sure. I have, I have, um, my... Other than that, that's basically all I've had. I just want to thank New Freedom Borough for leasing us the property. And, um, we're still trying to go, go, go big guns on it. Um, by the way, in case you do not know it, we are tenants now at the old facility on, uh, Main Street. Um, it, all that entire property has been sold in title transfers in effect right now. So both, uh, the individual is, um, being very, who purchased it is being very, very diligent with us and giving us a good, a good round rate. But hopefully it will be done. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
So how far will we have to move the, the gate?
I'm gonna have to go out and look, but then probably twenty feet, I'm thinking. What do you, Jeff, do you have a clue as to what, you're thinking that the gate should be moved back, twenty feet?
More than that.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to go out and look at it, you know? I, I really don't know.
Andy, it, Andy, it's probably way around the bend.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna have to have access, because it's, it's, there's a dead share before they start doing anything else like that. And I'm not looking for it to be done next week, okay?
Week after, is that...
I, it's Christmas time, I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure these guys are either booked, backed up or booked up, so...
I was gonna say, we'll have to talk to Donnie, but he's sitting next to you, so...
Okay, but I, I, I just wanted to get that done so we can start moving on and whatever.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll talk to Wade and Donnie and, um, and make things, make it happen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, people.
All right, now the borough manager, sorry.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go dark for a couple of minutes here, just so everybody can see. Um, I am going to skip over the manager's report, because honestly, everything on the report will either cover or tonight, or has already been covered. Um, so just wanted to jump right into the new website design, and I'll pull it up here in a second. But, uh, everything has switched over at this point. So if you go to your browser history, you type newfreedomborough.org, it should redirect you to the new site. Uh, there might be some cache pages in there, uh, but when you refresh, it'll clear down the, the new site, so... A lot of work went into the backend. The site is basically, um, there actually are HDA requirements for websites now, and it is fully compliant with regards to that. Does provide residents and anybody visiting or interested in some information about the borough. Uh, it's pretty much all on there. There are a couple pieces that we still need to work on and that we're still updating, but I'd say at this point, this site is probably ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent complete. Uh, one of the other things I wanted to mention, obviously, we're looking at it tonight on a projector. It's not gonna look as crisp and clear as if you're looking at it on your desktop, tablet, or phone, all of which are also compatible. Um, so I think probably at this point, most people are looking on a website, on a phone or a tablet. Um, not so much a desktop anymore, but it, the site, I don't know. Uh, it, this site does adapt to whatever the user, whatever, uh, device that they're using. So...
See your search history?
Yeah. Um, so this is the landing page for the new site. Uh, the header at the top is pretty much everything everybody need to know. In the background, you just have some different shots, landscape shots, aerial shots of, of the borough. Um, and again, the goal here was just to, when you land on the homepage, most of the information is, is right here at your fingertips. So I think one of the big things that we heard was, everybody wanted to know, um, stay current on updates, stay current on information. So the top-left header, which is Borough News, is gonna be the landing page for that. Um, so if you want to know information about, um, you know, tonight, the budget adoption, new ordinance adoption, leaf collection, brush pickup, um, trash delays, will be mirroring Savvy Citizen along with the website. So, um, I'm just gonna start, um, at the header, and we'll come back to the landing page or the homepage as well. So Borough News, we did add a couple little articles in here. Again, not much in here at this point, but we added in the Consumer Conference Report for the water system. We added in the Budget Notice for 2022 and our paving projects. So as you, when you pull up a Budget Notice, this is the notice that actually went into the paper. Um, and then we pull a little bit of excerpt out, some graphics. Um, and then the residents will be able to move through these little categories, which are Borough News. There'll be ones for utilities and events, updates and everything. So you'll be able to actually classify the different articles with these little green headers, subheaders in here. Next menu, residents, you have a couple dropdowns, uh, government, culture, meeting information, and, and how do I, um, just start with government. Um, this is just a little bit of information about how the borough operates. Um, have a little ticker there with different facts about the borough. So every time you scroll in, it'll, it'll populate information. Uh, then each one of the departments is listed. So elected officials, administration, building and zoning, and when you scroll over, they, they highlight and change color a little bit. Uh, emergency services, parks and rec, utility billing, Department of Public Works, refuse and recycling, and wastewater system. So each one of these has another link to it, which provides more information. I'll come back to that. Culture, information about New Freedom...
Along the twenty-one miles of the Heritage Rail Trail, live small communities ready to greet you.
Uh, with a video about the Heritage Rail Trail. Uh, when the page loads, so we'll just pause that for now. But, uh, we have information, and everything's linked. So the Heritage Museum link, Northern Central Railway, the Senior Center, Lions Club, Tasteful Occasion, Parks links to our site. So anywhere we see, uh, the red heading, um, it'll link to another page or to an outside. We do, yeah. Uh, the Heritage Museum, uh, this is an area that I did mention that we're working on the history of the borough. So we'll be working with Heritage Museum to get some information and pictures on the website. Talk about Trail Town Community, Rec Commission, Senior Center, Summit Grove. And this is obviously a page that'll adapt over time, uh, to changes. Meeting information, so, uh, we start off with Borough Council meeting schedule. So I added in the information for 2022. Gives the information, and then all of our agendas. So if you wanted tonight to see the agenda, um, there it is. The three-page agenda, that's right. Uh, Borough Council Minutes, so you have them broken down by year. Uh, if you wanted to look at 2021, I know there were some requests as far as to separate out a little better on the website. So we have... Meeting Minutes on the left and meeting recordings on the right. So the same idea, um, if you pull August ninth, that brings up the YouTube channel for New Freedom Borough and the Council Meeting. So those will be updated, um, as, as they're, as they're approved. And then we do have separate dropdowns for the Planning Commission as they're scheduled. Again, Planning Commission, zoning board, those meetings are as needed as, and then the Recreation Commission, which meets the first Thursday of each month. Uh, how do I is basically a catch-all. Um, so this, again, is, as we hear things in the office that we might need to add to the site, or we might need to provide more information to residents about, um, utility payments, where to register to vote, how to change driver's license information, report streetlight problems, um, talk to the rail trail, York County Parks about the Heritage Rail Trail, getting help with utility bills, property deed information. So basically a catch-all, uh, to provide that information to the residents. And if you notice, on the right-hand side, uh, every page has something about Savvy Citizen. So we're trying to get that information out there to get more people to sign up as much as possible. Calendar and events, um, I've got the Uptown Diane there, so have it. Uh, this is a plugin from Savvy Citizen at the top. So this calendar, obviously, auto-populates from everything with Savvy Citizen. In addition to that, uh, there will be a separate event tab at the bottom. And as events come up, whether they're council meetings, um, events with the recreation, events with Lions Club, NCR, any community events will be able to add in here. And then there'll be a separate, uh, page that will auto-populate with information on the event. Connect, you'll be reaching out to, to Philly, to reach out to elected officials. Um, so we have everybody's picture there with the term and everything. Um, obviously, this'll change.
This is the work shots, right?
Yeah, it looks like mug shots.
Yeah, very mug shots.
Good thing you didn't break you.
Uh, Mayor, uh, we do have a link to the Mayor's Facebook page that if any other council members, uh, decide to do position-based Facebook pages, we can link that at that time. Utility payment, uh, that takes you to the outside source to, to view your sewer refuse and water bill and make those payments as needed.
You can actually make a payment online?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
Is there, is there a fee for...
It's, it's an outside, yes, there is a fee, yeah.
Do you know what, yeah, what that is?
I think it was three dollars.
All right, so it's three dollars, so to speak.
Three dollars per one hundred?
Yes.
No, per one hundred.
I'll just drive it down here.
Yeah, a lot of people say that, some people, um, it's just, uh, for the borough to absorb all those credit card transaction fees, it would just be too, too much, and it's not really... it would just be too much and it's not really equitable to spread that across all the residents. The convenience fee is passed on to the user. Building and zoning, this is also a subcategory under the government, we'll go back to that. Again, this page is built upon providing resident information for permits. So one of the neat things that we had added is an interactive zoning map. So if you're familiar, York County has a GIS map. This GIS map is built upon that and it provides a little bit more information to users. So it loads in here and we're able to look at each property in the borough and look at zoning districts. So if we want to click on this property here, click and it gives us the single-family residential district, purpose of the district, what the setbacks are, lock coverage issues, and then the link to the zoning ordinance as well. In addition, just like the York County tax map, we can look at what that parcel, who the owner is, the acres, and any other information that's populated by York County. And this updates constantly as well, whenever the county pushes websites or what, updates out, this will update as well. So again, really just for the user to browse and look at the different zoning districts, what the requirements of those districts are and, you know, other information.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of useful information.
Yeah, we're already using this in the office as far as the permanent tracking process, so.
And whenever you see a planning commission meeting or a zoning meeting, you'll be able to go and look at the property and see, you know, what's going on in that property, what the actual zoning is, what the laws are.
So moving along with that, as far as permits, we did have applications created. So again, this is a fully electronic process now. So if you want to come in and apply for a residential building permit, you can access the site here, which will launch a, basically a form that the user, the resident or contractor can fill all this information. This gets submitted to the Borough Office and goes through an approval process that hits the different employee departments. So this keeps, basically, it helps to expedite things. Obviously, we're able to receive this a lot quicker, get it through and notify the residents of the process. So every approval process or if there's additional information needed, this software auto-generated and sends a message to the applicant saying, "We need more information on lock coverage, it was denied because of setback issues," or whatever the issue might be, as well as your permits approved and ready for pickup.
And when do they pay their fee? I mean, obviously, there's some permits, there's a fee with a building permit.
Yeah, and this, this actually will, we're able to collect those fees through the site, the application fee through the site. The permit fee will be collected when they pick it up.
So once that, once they fill out that information, it can be submitted online?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great.
So a couple different, the application procedure document, driveway permit, fence permit, zoning permit. We still are working on a couple of the details of the commercial building permit, but that'll be there as well.
Is there a fee associated with paying your application fee online?
No.
There's not?
Not through this salt, no. We also have information on the Planning Commission. So again, this links to information about the Planning Commission, when the board meetings, board members, and then this will actually link to an application for subdivision and land development. Same with the zoning hearing board, that page links about the board, when the meetings are, board members, and an application for zoning hearing board. And then the outside, the last thing is the zoning ordinance, which links to the codification. Top right, code of ordinances, that'll take you into Ecode, and we already looked at the interactive zoning map. So we'll go back to government. Elected officials, administration. So again, this is, these are employees. And you build a little bit of job description about email addresses for each one, how to contact them, what they do. Mugshots again. Building and zoning, we looked at. Emergency services, this page really relates to police, fire, EMS. Parks and Recreation. Uh-oh, you can fix that.
We'll fix it in-house now.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure all that happened, but. It is, yeah. I haven't, I think I have another way.
That's the one you were showing me the other day.
There we go. So that link broke earlier when we had to make some changes. We'll get that fixed. Parks and Recreation, I knew there was going to be one thing, so I just, through all that, I knew there was going to be one thing. Recreation Commission, again, information about the board, when the board meetings are, board members. Through this site, again, you'll be able to apply to rent the community center as well as the park rental. We have a few changes to make on that park rental agreement. This, again, is an online form that all populates into our system. So if you want to rent the community center, you'll be able to rent the different rooms, make the fee. Same with the park, you want to rent the pavilion, we'll be able to process that, you'll be able to see availability and everything.
Does that trigger an email to somebody here?
Yes, multiple emails, yeah.
I was just wondering if somebody's on vacation or?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple step processes, yeah. And then we broke down and looked at the different recreation facilities throughout the borough. Davis, we have a couple drone footage shots through Ernst Park. Little bit of information, information about Freedom Green. Bill Ridge, Weather's Field. And that's just from the wild park. So. Back to government.
Hold on, a baby was born, updated the.
Yeah, yeah. Utility billing, talk about that, that takes you to the outside site. Department of Public Works. Again, another interactive experience, so this is, to the right, there is a snow emergency map. So this allows our population, as well as anybody else, to view whether the street that's highlighted in blue there or whether the street that you live on is highlighted in blue and indicated as a snow emergency group. And then we gave some information on the left-hand side about how we call snow emergencies, where they'll be posted, obviously on the site, as well as Savvy Citizen. But it's a little bit of information if someone's new to the area to understand what a snow emergency group is and where they are located in the borough. A little bit about the water system, brush collection. Again, that navigates to information about the guidelines, when the collection occurs, and then application for limb collection, which will be, again, all online, the ability to schedule that. That will actually populate into our GIS system, so the Public Works employees know exactly where to go and on which days to go there. Information about leaf collection, Christmas tree collection, and stormwater system. The stormwater pages will grow. I know we're right now looking at updating the stormwater ordinance, so there'll be more information that we'll be able to put out to the public moving forward. Refugees and recycling, information about trash collection, also links into Penn Waste and their collection calendar.
Is that just for the standard days or do they update that calendar for?
They, they update that, yeah, yes. Little bit about the wastewater treatment facility. I think personally, I think this is kind of neat. So the page loads in, you get this drone footage shot of the treatment plant. And below that is the treatment plant process, it talks about it with linked, hyperlinks to different pages. Going back up here to the top, you can see there's little blue hotspots that are flashing. You can actually click on those and it'll talk to you about what that is at the treatment plant. We've got headworks, we're able to basically do a flyover of the SPR tanks as well.
That is really cool.
Yeah.
Say good. Yeah, there is, there's a lot of information in here and I'm not going to obviously take the time to read the paragraphs to you, but. One of the other things, and if you heard John talk about the Phoenix Contact upgrade to the PLC at the treatment plant, this page goes into a whole video that was taken by Phoenix Contact about.
Ensuring the availability and reliability of water and wastewater systems can be a significant challenge when the automated systems controlling critical processes have become outdated.
So that, you know, provides anybody now with some information.
One utility addressed this challenge, MICA.
And then they can actually go in here and tour the treatment plant through this. So if you want to, if you want to go out through and you want to look at the controls, you can pan through the buildings.
See, that's a base camp.
It allows you to pretty much go outside and navigate through the different buildings. Again, that's pretty much all up for the user to play around with.
I think everybody would have to agree that this, this website provides several orders of magnitude above our old website providing.
And then waterfall, so same, whoops. Little drone shot of the.
Waterfall.
Of the waterfall, yeah. And there's, there's other ones throughout the treatment process, again, you'll need to click on each one. I'm trying to think of what I'm missing, if anything. Yeah, so just real quick homepage, obviously you have your links here across the, across the screen. News, we looked at that. Upcoming events will link in the calendar. Borough meeting information. What services you can explore online, again, they're all pretty much linked up. It's just reproducing those throughout the different pages. Have another slider there with different information about New Freedom, message from our mayor. Newsroom again about Borough News, and then you have your footer menu with our contact information. So questions, what are mess?
That's pretty wild. No, that's, that's fantastic.
People don't realize how much work went into that. We thank you, Andrew, very much. Brought us up though.
The biggest thing that we've got here is it's all done inside the Borough Office. We use, we can now use it as a tool. Before, we were kind of the, the dog being wagged by the tail. Anytime we wanted to put something on the website, we had to call, we had to wait, somebody was on vacation, it would take a week to get put on. Now we have complete control of the website, we can use it as a tool to talk to people in the community. The survey for the rec board, rec commission will be on here for, you know, what do you want to see from your rec commission? It's just a huge difference to, I'm just, that's, that's just, congratulations. It's very above and beyond, but, yeah.
And we're obviously open to, if there's things that need change, obviously, we saw one link that was broken. But if there's other things that need added or upgraded and changed a little bit, you know, as, as people use the site, please provide the feedback.
I don't know how much of a, how much of a really take, but what about local businesses?
Yeah, we talked about that too, and we're developing that along with what we're going to talk about later with Knox Box. So we have a strong list and then providing, yeah, providing links to their information as well.
Very cool. Thank you, yeah.
Thanks for sharing with me during those couple months. It definitely took a little longer to get started, but. Quite a bit of work right now.
It's worth it.
Yeah.
Yep, excellent job.
Very good. Mr. Solicitor. We have a useful one-on-one presentation. As the presser thread, you'll see in the entrance, and then for anyone that's going to be elected, we're sending that information down to Andy to share with everybody. And there's a recent case out of Eastern District of Pennsylvania, it's kind of interesting. There's a gentleman that liked to go to school board meeting and they said, "What's your name and what's your address?" Or he can speak. He said, "That's a violation of my First Amendment rights." And the court agreed with him. So they can ask him to sign in, they can ask you to sign in, but they cannot, you cannot require folks to actually state their name and address. That is only the Eastern District of Pennsylvania, that is the federal court. But I want to let you know that that is kind of, that was, that was interesting, it came out the last month. And we may see that move its way west towards us, and it may go into the, maybe, maybe it'll change in Pennsylvania, I don't know. Maybe the legislature will say, at the very least, you can state your name and address. Now, the interesting thing is, guess whose names and addresses they have access to? Everyone sitting around the table. But you, yeah, so they can sign in, people can find a sign. I guess it stems out of some of the tension that's in meetings lately. And how afraid possibly that they'd be hunted down or, I guess, chastised or house vandalized or whatever the case may be. So that was a recent case that I thought was interesting and we'll probably see more of down the road. Any questions for the solicitor?
So your minutes would just say, "Someone spoke."
A citizen spoke.
Right.
Yeah. You can rely on the sign, you can get them to sign in with their address, so you got it for the minutes.
You just have to know who was who.
Yes.
Can you, can you issue name tags when I come in?
And actually, a lot of school districts do that. Like there are a lot of school districts where if you want to speak, you have to fill out a little like index card and you take it up to the business manager, the secretary, whoever, and they call you. They'll say, "Hey, so-and-so can speak now." It doesn't have all that personal info.
Is that legal then? You can still do that?
You can still do that part, yes.
Doesn't need to be something organized.
Well, for the moment.
For the moment.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I do have the report in your packet from Bootark Corn, kind of goes over everything with regards to the slider tank replacement updates there, as well as coordination. We're still working with the contractor on the water line replacement and waiting on information from Penn Dole at this point. We have the profiling test back from Constitution Avenue, we're waiting on a formal decision from Penn Dole.
So that, that decision was not formal? I mean, I thought we were just waiting for it in the rain.
We are. To me, that's formal, yeah.
Is, and this is about the paving with the marks that were on Constitution?
On door. Door on Constitution.
Yeah, this is about the.
Just so everybody knows, it was pointed out by a number of citizens that the road was waving on Constitution after the paving was completed. Our Borough Office determined that it was because they probably used a machine that stopped and started so that it set up waves in the pavement. So we hired an engineering company and we did a profile on the road. And PennDOT has agreed that it does not pass, so.
We spoke about this at a previous meeting. We said that PennDOT was putting a bother on the town business.
It came out. It came out. And so we're waiting for, I'm sorry. We're waiting for a formal letter from PennDOT saying that the road is not acceptable. And at that point, we'll go after the contractor. That's where we are. Is that about?
Yeah.
That's pretty much it. And we are holding enough money to make the repairs ourselves. We haven't paid them the final payment, so. Any other questions on the engineering report? Water system. Wastewater treatment. John made a trip on statement the other day about the amount of slides we're able to haul now that we're dewatering at a higher rate. Do you remember the exact numbers?
No, no, I don't remember the number.
But we're saving a lot of money.
Yeah. It seems to be working pretty well. Yeah, they don't have to make as many trips.
And that's supposedly going to even get better when we go to new blowers and. No, this is just the sludge. Though what happens is the sludge settles in the tank. You pull off the sludge at some point and you de-water it, meaning basically you wring it out, you squish it. And so you get the water out. That's already, no, that just adds oxygen to the process itself to make it work better. But yeah, so the new, the new, the new dewatering is working well.
The blowers will increase, increase treatment plant capacity.
Capacity.
Not capacity, I shouldn't have said that. Treatment efficiency, process efficiency, yes. Yes. Makes your bugs happy.
Yeah. They'll be able to breathe now. Breathing is, nothing like a bug with COVID.
Yeah.
Well, we're, I think we're up to about zoning. I wanted to mention too that we're talking about the rental committee or the rental inspections. And we kind of let it, I mean, it hasn't really moved forward at all. Do we, are we still waiting for one more order to come forward or?
I think, I think, I believe you gave the number and you did as well. We just need to get everything together now and start probably after the first year with.
Some committee.
To look at that ordinance, yes.
Okay. All right. The mayor actually, I think, I think it was you pointed out too that we now have a hotel in town. Summit Grove is renting rooms and as, as, well, they, yeah, they've just been, I think they've just updated because of the railroad, the NCR and all the cowboy weekend and all those things. Anyway, point being is when we look at the rental committee, I think one of the things we probably should look at is, you know, we could have a hotel inspection as well, which may just to make sure. I mean, obviously we had water problems, so with Summit Grove. So we could add that in as part of the inspection to make sure that everything continues to improve. So we'll look at on the first or around at our first meeting. Maybe we'll, it'll be the first of the year or a little after.
I just had a quick question on the, on the zoning. For the abstracts of commercial building permits, that's actually November 2021. Is that correct? As they're talking about the brewery.
Yes. Yeah. That was just a typo.
Brings us up to recreation. And this one? You can't, is there anything to discuss?
Yes, if you look under number one, two, number three. Originally that structure was going to be demolished. Now they're going to rebuild the structure. Has he gotten permits to do that work? Or does he need to get permits to do that work? Because now the roof's completely off of that building.
Yeah, the owner was informed, not the owner. Owner in common.
Yeah.
Was informed that he will need to get permits for improvements to that building. And that if they tore it down completely, they would not be able to rebuild it in the same spot, which is why.
Well, I don't understand why. If it's, if it's got a foundation there, why can't he build on the same foundation?
We not need current setbacks. He can, he can renovate.
Mine didn't and they allowed me to do it. I don't understand. As long, they said as long as. And George, I'm going to keep my mouth shut off, tearing my groin down.
And I would have to verify that, but a lot of times, I believe you said yours was fired?
My, yes, mine was fired.
Sometimes is the exception.
Oh, okay.
If the building is destroyed, sometimes.
I just, I just know when he works on it, it's usually the weekend. And I heard hammering and sawing and I didn't know he got permits to actually do that so that, you know, Wade can make sure that it's being done properly, so.
Obviously we want him to get a permit, but at this point, any improvement would be, would be better than what is now.
This is true.
And the bottom one is closed. Vehicle was removed.
The one.
Picture of it.
The one. The one has been removed, but the other one.
Other one is current.
For sure. Okay. You double check that?
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate you working on those. It's, boy, we didn't realize how tough some of these would be. It's, it's very time consuming.
Rec report.
We're going to skip into the land development subdivision without any.
No, sorry.
There are change from last one.
Yeah. So rec report, I was not able to make this past meeting, but Kim was there. They did have a question about the name change. Basically that came down two months ago when they advertised that as a rec commission. No longer the rec board. So that was the big difference there. With going to a regional rec director, they would become a commission anyway. So when I spoke to Mary Ann, she said, everything was okay with keeping it how it is currently. Leaving it as a rec commission. There's some questions about some help with soliciting some sponsorships from some local companies. I told them that Andy, Andrew would be providing some contact names and numbers that they can use to get started for their coming concerts this, this summer. I do want to jump back up to number five. The Fourth of July parade will be on seven, nine, twenty-two this year. So invite all that. Just want to make sure that you're aware of that and that it's on Tech Citizen and all the other calendars on there. They have secure data going and first class for two of the concerts. The dates of these concerts, concerts will be eight thirteen and nine seventeen. The nine seventeen concert is to coincide with Freedom Fest. And I believe that, I believe they're both also Saturdays, making sure that more people are able to attend and also alleviating some issues that they have with food trucks. So tennis was progressing nicely. The youth indoor tennis will begin in the community center on February sixth and will run through March thirteenth. Let's know and make updates on three twenty and three twenty-seven.
Brian, so just jump back up for a second. So the, the, basically the sponsorship and the food trucks, rec's going to handle that?
Yes.
And Andy will give them names and addresses?
Yeah. And I think they might need just some help if you can walk through the process of it. I don't think that that will take too long. But speaking from experience, I think that can be an intimidating experience. Having a really cold, cold call to anybody for solicitation like this.
I mean, just, just as kind of an oh, by the way, I mean Crescent has always been very supportive.
Yeah.
And Berkeantine is very supportive of New Freedom Borough. So I mean, it's not really a cold call per se.
I'm not, it is in the sense that they've never done it.
I know, yeah. I'm just saying they will be receptive. It's not like you're calling somebody and asking about their new car warranty.
Yeah. It's, I think it's just the first time generous, so to speak.
I also, like, I don't want anybody to think that Andy and I used Andrew Schaefer last year. All the, all the.
Yeah, yeah, you guys did all that on your own.
I mean, this is similar to prior years. We would like the help from the Borough and Andrew Schaefer. There was no help from the Borough and Andrew Schaefer getting the sponsorship.
Right. There weren't, there weren't prior years either. It was just the one year.
Not for the sponsors, but Tanya frequently helped.
Right.
The rec group.
Yep, yeah, and that's why I said I think a lot of this is going to be new to them because of things that have been done with a previous administrator.
And the only other question I had, are the three concerts the concerts they're doing? Is that what they've decided or?
They said that the first, the first two have been secured. I don't think they named a date for the third.
But they're planning on three total?
That's what they had mentioned before, yes.
Okay.
I thought they had a date for the third. I didn't.
Well, it's going to coincide with the Eric Diaz and the Day of Hope of them. So they actually probably have a.
No, I'm sorry, they did, I missed.
A window.
October or something.
Yeah, so maybe they're waiting for a date from him. But I know that they had said three, but I hadn't seen the, the other date.
Okay.
Pickball continues to be very successful. The November session had over twenty-five participants with new members coming every week. We received four hundred and eighty dollars, which has reduced expensive down, expenses down to two oh nine. There was an issue with the clock. I spoke with Andrew the other day. Has that been fixed or do they have to order it?
Yeah, we're going to make sure we can get, obviously get the right size, get the things. We'll take care of that.
Yeah. Farmers market tabled until the January meeting. Just skipping over this little last one. There was a question about how the rec council could spend their money. I also spoke with Andrew about that. And if they are staying within the budget that they provide, then they are free to use that money as needed. If something were to come up unexpectedly, you know, they can obviously come back to council and then talk about it further.
Could, could we add budgeted line items? Like for instance, the money set aside for programs should be spent on programs and, you know, right?
That was, that was really the, the big thing there.
I think the only, the only other thing they did until last meeting was they authorized two hundred and fifty dollars for Maddox Ride Out. For it, for the Gada pit. I don't think they realized that we had already given five hundred. But that's their money they can.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would probably recommend, I mean, their money is our money and vice versa. So if we authorize five hundred, I think that should be all inclusive. I, I don't want, I certainly don't want in the future, people, especially in the future, people going thinking they could go like see Donnie and get something from Donnie and get something from John, get something from, you know.
Yeah, I, I do have a question. I'm going to follow up with Andrew later on some of the finances of it.
Yeah, you know, when, when an Eagle Scout does a project, we went through this. One of our kids is an Eagle Scout. And you go through this, he has to line up all the, all the, all the help, all the funding, get commitments for that before you even start, before the council even approves it. And if his parents said, well, we're going to pay a big punch, chunk of it, thank you. No, I don't think it's appropriate for him to come back after the fact when he was supposed to do this as part of his Eagle Scout project and say, you know what? Ah, it's violent, we, you know, my parents had to put money in. Okay, so they, that was part of, that was part of his presentation to the council. I assume when he got approval for his Eagle Scout project.
Yeah, we went back through minutes and we unfortunately didn't find where we had stated that I think in the future, if there are any other projects by scouts or anybody else and we approve them, I think they need to be approved contingent upon that individual or group having funds ahead of time.
But, but I think the point is in this situation that for that Eagle Scout to get his packet signed off by the chief up in York, whoever signs it off, he has to say he has one hundred percent of the funds. And he has to outline where the funds are going. If there's a major change, if he buys something totally different, then he might have to go back and work with the Boy Scouts.
Yeah, he, he can't get his Eagle Scout designation until he's actually completed that, which includes having all the money paid for that.
I guess what I'm saying is it's not really for the Borough to tell someone that they have to get their money because the Boy Scouts say you have to have all the money.
Unless the company comes back and decides they're going to take back the. Why, because it hasn't been paid for or something.
Yeah, I, I think we're all saying the same thing. I think when some, when an Eagle Scout comes forward and wants to do a project, that includes getting the funding for it. And I, and we probably, you know, I probably made a mistake calling for a motion to, to do that.
And, and I, and we probably, you know, I probably made a mistake calling for a motion to, to do that because it's really part of, I mean, when my...
I mean, we try to help them out, but, you know, they, they, I'm, I'm just surprised at the council in New York. And maybe they, you know, like, say maybe part of the arrangement was his parents didn't pay for it. Okay, so they're satisfied, but now it's after the fact and...
Do they have to disclose where you get the money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my grand, my grandson became an Eagle Scout and he had to go get all of his own funding and... You can solicit businesses and there's certainly nothing, there was certainly nothing wrong with him asking council.
If, if they, he had done it before.
Before would have been better.
Project and that was included, that would be one of the figures.
Almost as like if someone comes and builds a gazebo on your property and says, would you mind giving me some? But I think we're... Okay, Bernal, did you want to talk about your, I can never pronounce it, Cesquas Centennial.
Cesquas Centennial. Yes, I, I was, I went around town and talked to a lot of the people. I said, because, but the Cesquas Centennial coming up, there's a lot of people that are interested and think that we should do something to celebrate a hundred and fifty years. So I started to get information together and I looked at other, the things that we did back in nineteen seventy-three. And some of the things were probably not be practical to do right now. But there, I was getting ideas together and I'm going to go around and talk to different people. I know some people that I can probably get to help me to put this together because I'm hoping that I can find enough people that, that are good at putting things together because sometimes I'm not. But I would like to see this done and I'm, I'm very sure most people in New Freedom would because I, I think this is a good thing.
I think it would be appropriate to appoint a committee and you be the chair. And would you want to find the people you want to?
Yes, because I have to, because I know there are some of the people that I've worked with before that, that I think we could probably get this together.
I mean, obviously Heritage would be...
Yeah, Donna Peace is one of them.
Heritage, NCR.
Yeah.
You know, the mayor probably would be interested.
Yes, because I, I think that, I think the best way to do it.
Why don't you come back in January with a list of your committee members and we'll formally, we can formally appoint them then?
Okay, good idea.
Okay.
Fire EMS. Next meeting is December sixteenth at two thirty. As I mentioned, I will, you know, it's a particular one. Could you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry?
Get in here, anything?
The next meeting is December sixteenth at two thirty. It'll be at the Shrewsbury Township Building. It's, they're, they're in the process of doing a DCD study on fire and EMS. And that's just the next meeting. And then, as Kim pointed out, when the EMS people came today, at that same day, at six thirty that evening, there'll be another meeting to go over the billing. There's approximately seven hundred thousand dollars in outstanding billing from EMS. Obviously, some portion of that, we're guessing fifty percent, is probably just gonna have to get written off. But we need to figure out how they can best collect it because obviously it's impacting our EMS services. Is that about it? Okay. What committees have I missed? Anyone else have anything? Go to the order? Okay. All right, that brings us to unfinished business. The first is the ordinance for handling and soliciting. These have all been advertised. And...
I make a motion to approve this particular ordinance. No, number two.
Yeah, one more second.
Okay, we have a second. So any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Ordinance authorizing the intergovernmental cooperation, cooperation agreement for a joint board of appeals. This is the one that saves us money.
What are the, the groups involved with that?
This is through the county.
That's all, that's all the county?
Yeah.
And this is, and this is just a, this board just takes appeals for different violations and that? Is that what?
Just, just for the building permits.
Just for the building permits? Okay.
You have to have a board in place and this would give us that board.
Okay. Any question we approve?
Bernal seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Ordinance amending chapter one ninety-one relating to structures within the right of way.
Can I ask? And I talked to Andy a little bit about this. Send a letter out for ten days, they don't move it, we go out. And we're not just talking to Andy, we're just, well, you know, we have to pick it up, bring it back, have them come and get it. Dave, is there any reason we just can't go out and remove it from the street, tip it over and put it back on the property, front of the property instead of having to pick it up and just come and get it?
Well, the risk, the risk you run is you damage it. You lay it down.
Too bad.
Or someone puts it back off right away. And the idea is, is a few minutes, come and get it.
We're gonna get into playing the game, so one thought I had, if, if we get into that, it's not damage, they're gonna put it back up. If we're gonna get into gameplay and it's gonna go back and forth, why don't we just, after the second time, when they've gotten the letter and they haven't complied and we've had them move it, then we just start fining them, fifty dollars a day, a hundred dollars a day, long as it's there.
Well, they ain't fined anyway, okay?
Well, right, so basically you, you give them those, they have ten days to remove it. If they do not do that, you have the right to remove that. Then we have another ten days to hold that structure. If they do not pick it up within ten days, we can dispose of it.
We could damage it and remove it. I think it might be easier just to tip it over, put it on the property and say, it's yours. Don't put it back in the street. I mean, I, I find it incredible that adults and parents think it's okay to stick this thing in the street or in another case, they put it right in the sidewalk. Now, if you, you got a child riding a bicycle or somebody pushing a stroll, they have to leave the sidewalk, go over the curb, in the street, back up. It's ridiculous. I don't know where people, where the thought process is behind some of this stuff.
There is no fine though that goes along with the ordinance, or do we do that by resolution?
It's a fee set by resolution, shall be charged for each temporary structure returned. But there's no fine for...
Well, you're, you're only amending the sections that are listed here, so there is a section of the...
Okay, that's what I thought, it does charge them a fine.
We're just not amending, there's no need to list right because we're not amending.
The different point is, is we can't just impose a fine. You have to go through due process, let them plead the case. So that's why you can't just fine it. We can do like the quality of life where you say, we're gonna fine you unless you pay twenty-five dollars or whatever.
I, I think it's reasonable, what Danny said is, you know, I mean, if, I mean, if you go to plow the snow and there is something in the road and you lay it down in their yard, that's kind of a warning. And if it's back again and you remove it, I, you know, I, I think we can, this allows us to do what we need to do.
Yeah, I don't know how you'd plow snow around those anyways. I mean, you gotta go out in the street and use the snow and shit.
Yeah.
And I don't, you know...
Well, God forbid you can, they don't see it and they're plowing and the thing tips over, comes through the cab of the, the truck and hurts one of our...
You know, I, I don't, I see these things when I'm out walking the dog and driving the car and most of these that I'm, I'm talking about, I've never seen anybody playing with them. It seems that they have it stored in the street as we're allowed to. That's not what the street's for.
Although there is a kid across the street from me that plays at six thirty in the morning when he's waiting for the school bus. But we'll let him go. Okay.
So make a motion to approve it, you know, and...
Yeah, and then enforcing it would be...
Yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, if we're gonna get into gameplay, we need to have a, you know, second move in front of it after that.
It's kind of like you tell people to cut their lawn, you wait till the absolute last day, they cut their lawn. Then they let it go and you have to send them another day.
All over again. That's why if you start hitting the pocket with people, you know, they won't...
Not easy.
So I have a motion to approve.
One second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, ordinance setting forth requirements for Knox boxes in the borough. We had considerable discussion last time about this. This is for the fire department, access to rental properties and businesses.
We are the only local municipality that does not have this.
Well, this, this gives, you know, I think this is a fair, a fair way to do it, give some notice and...
Although I do understand Shrewsbury Borough walked theirs back pretty quickly after they adopted it. That was my understanding because it was very difficult to get people to comply with it.
I just had a conversation last week with Shrewsbury Council and our fire department and they, they walked it back, but they walked it forward again. Because they were the ones that asked us to go through with Knox box because we were the only one that didn't. And if Shrewsbury comes over, if Shrewsbury comes over here, what they've got to do is break down somebody's front door and they don't want to do that, be responsible for that.
Wouldn't you entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the Knox box order, ordinance?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, we had tabled an ordinance setting regulations for the operation of food trucks within the borough. We come up with a way that we were gonna do this, that it wasn't going to stop ice cream trucks? I mean, this, this works for me. I don't know, does anyone have any comments opposing this or...
Make a motion that we accept the food truck order?
It's...
To advertise.
Oh, for advertising.
For advertising.
Just that it's, this is just for final review or continued review and...
Like we talked about it last time.
Right.
That's right.
It's still a draft. Can I have a motion to go ahead and advertise this ordinance?
Second round. I didn't say advertise, it first, it's... I didn't make a motion to advertise this ordinance.
All in favor?
That is a good way.
My vote is aye. We tabled the motion to require residential parking permits along certain streets in the borough. Primarily, it was South Front Street that was the problem. I think, I mean, we had a very good meeting, as I said before, with NCR. I think that due to COVID and coming out of COVID, a lot of communications got lost. And Bob Dixon actually had COVID, so he was kind of spearheading it. So I think we've, we've actually come up with a plan on how we're going to better use the park, the parking lot, put signs up directing people to the municipal lot. And they're going to put it on their website. We will also put it on our website for, for where the parking should be for... And so I think, I think we could leave this table until, until we see how things work out in the next year. That would be my recommendation.
So is this just for the combo weekend or is it always?
Well, that's what precipitated the whole thing. I mean, you know, they basically, they blocked off the top end of the parking lot. I don't think they meant to do that. I think they were struggling, trying to figure out what to do and they kind of did it, you know, without lack, you know, for, without direction basically. So I think everything's okay now. I think we had a very good meeting. I think they, they understand that they need to communicate more with the residents and...
What's, what's gonna keep people coming to ride on the train though from parking on Front Street and grandma can't get her groceries in the house?
Well, not, that's, that's, that's the actual, that's the actual problem. But it's not, it's, it's a few days a year right now. And, you know, rather than set up, I mean, we would have, we would have...
Saturday, you couldn't, you know, if you had to get in your house on Front Street, you could because the municipal parking lot was full.
Yeah. I mean, the other side to that too is, is if they add, they've already added one car. If they add another car, you're really gonna be...
I don't think we're gonna have a whole lot going on down there until spring. Why don't we go ahead, if you want to table it, let's table it until spring and see how it works out. If we have complaints from folks on Front Street, continued, maybe then revisit.
Yeah, I like that. That's a good idea.
For, for what it's worth, there's some, some law out there that suggests that you cannot completely make a residential permit parking area because they are public streets and you cannot pass a law that basically favors residents over non-residents. You can do, you can do limited parking where there's a, you know, non-residential or non, non-resident parking is limited to one hours or two hours.
What's what's your...
What? During the fair, that's temporary, not all the time. Because the law basically is, you can't favor one group of people over another, to the exclusion of other group of people.
Well, ours would be temporary too. It don't really while the train...
While the train's operating. I, I understand what you're saying. I, I just want you to know that there are some limitations on the police power to regulate parking. And one of the things in here, one of the criteria says, you know, one of the criteria is the ability of the residents to pay the administrative fee associated with adopting new parking. That almost sounds like you're pay for play. I mean, that's, that's pretty much frowned upon in the law as well. So there's a couple of issues with this we have to tweak if you really want to do it. But there is law that, that addresses this and we just have to be, you have, you have pretty limitless powers, but there are limits to it.
I'm putting a note on my calendar for April first to look at it again.
When business picks up.
Their season's almost over.
Okay.
One of the things is do ales and rails.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Do we need a motion to do that or just leave it tabled?
You have to make a motion to take it off the table. So as long as it's on the table, it stays on the agenda.
Leave it on the table.
Unless you want to say a date certain. And then we can take it off the agenda and fill that.
Um, I'll, I'll put it on the agenda for April and we'll see how things are. Okay. I, I was thinking we, we would have a short executive session for the planning commission to talk about the planning commission people. You think that would be appropriate?
Actually, you, you can't have an executive session to talk about filling a vacancy on planning commission or borough council. Where's that again?
You don't consider it personal?
I, I actually consider it a express exception from the exception.
Exception?
In a such... Because that's what it says. So I don't consider anything, is what the law says.
Okay, so currently we have one planning commission and one alternate zoning? Yes?
The zoning was done. I thought we just did, we did the zoning.
No, we moved, we moved Rodney from alternate to...
And then who was the other guy that, um... There was, yeah, there was another guy that, Teresa, that Terry recommended.
Okay, so we're okay there? All right, so we just need for the planning commission. Okay, well, we have three letters of intent. Four of those.
Only three on the other, you know.
Yes, three. Yes, three.
I wasn't assigned to have this received, was I?
But we're, we, I mean, it's prudent to fill the possessions because there are legal requirements that you don't have.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about that. I'm probably sure we didn't have a date range on when applications.
Well.
Can we bring these people in to interview them?
Sure.
Yeah, because this is limited information we've got here. It's just, I'm interested. Pick me.
Yeah. I think you've got them. I mean, I think, I mean, Dan, Daniel. Help me with pronunciation. Behan. Yes, but anyway, he, he has a lot of background.
He's got a lot of background.
A lot of background.
Doesn't make it better.
And he also.
So that doesn't make him any better than anyone.
Well, no. At least he would have a.
Just for Christmas party.
Where were you?
I was not there.
And the other one that, that jumps out at me is Jim Donahue. I don't, I don't know any of these people, but his, his family's lived in town for 120 years. He's a Susquehannock High School graduate. He's an air force veteran, aeronautics. I mean, I, you know, obviously he has an analytical mind. He should be able to apply the law. So I would, I would suggest one of those two. Do we have someone in attendance?
How's it going?
Which, which one?
I'm Tim Donahue.
Never would have known. I knew your dad forever.
Oh, okay, yeah.
At least, at least I said nice things about you.
Thank you.
There you go. Is anybody else in attendance?
Eric Ahog. Eric Ahog.
Yeah, we could make, I mean, we can make a list of questions, but I'm just. I mean, you're, you're, you're both to be commended just for submitting and for attending a meeting. I mean, we don't usually get that far. So, so that's, that's, that's very, you know. You both realize that on the planning commission, you basically, you apply the law. And there's not really, like, if somebody comes in and they have a plan to put something that you don't like on a piece of property, it really doesn't enter into it. It's, does it meet the zoning? Does it meet the planning commission? And we, we actually already have a, are we going to need somebody to go to the, to the planning? Help me out. The, um. The planning committee, are we going to need somebody to go to that?
Oh, for Southern Regional?
Right.
Or South.
Yeah, Southern York County, yeah.
I'm assuming we'll have appointed representation here.
Is that you, is somebody from the planning commission or?
My, I believe it would be someone from council and then some, someone on staff.
In the, in the planning commission, it's advisory. They can make a recommendation to council, but it's advisory, it's not.
Right, yeah, it is advisory, yes.
I was just looking to make sure.
So there's only the one vacancy we have. Is that for an alternate?
Yeah, this is to replace.
We have, what, two alternates, am I correct?
Probably we have any alternates.
On planning?
Yeah. No, we don't have any?
We don't have any.
So that means we have three openings, two alternates and one.
I don't think there's.
The planning commission doesn't say anything about alternates.
Just the zoning hearing board, right, okay.
Yeah, and I mean, the code, the code says five members on the planning.
We have four.
When's your next meeting?
January. January 30th.
I mean, planning commission. Yeah, planning commission.
Oh, wait, they're asking either.
We don't have any, there's no. What I'm saying is you're under a rush right now because you have a meeting coming up. So if you want to talk to them, bring the folks in and ask them some questions and then get a feel.
Why don't we do that? Why don't we have Eric and James and W O K with you?
Sure.
And our next, our next borough meeting is the 3rd of January, right?
That'll be a rework meeting.
Right, so we have, and then we get that done by the. Do they come to us or do they come into our, that committee that you have?
Which?
Do they come to the whole board or do they come into that committee that you formed for getting people?
Well, this isn't really a personnel issue. I mean, we could, we could have a subset of ourselves, you know, or, or we could all get back together again and talk to them. What's your pleasure?
I mean, I think that subset's fine. I think having a subset's fine. We just want to hear, you know, who are the people and what they've got, what they have to offer to us.
Do you want to set that up tonight while they're here and maybe what their schedule is and?
Jim, you said you're retired, right?
Yes.
You're, I'm assuming not?
Not, but work from home, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We're going to have all four or do we have one another here?
Well, I think, I mean, by virtue of the fact that they've shown up.
Yeah.
You know, I think that that. Yep, they sat here this long. They paid their dues.
No, we have one else. We have three, just pick the two.
Yeah.
But your, your ordinance does say that you can have the planning commission, you have three members or maybe five.
Yeah.
I thought we only had three.
Yeah, but there's no limitation.
We have five.
Yeah, you do have, yeah.
We do have five?
Yeah.
We have four right now, we gave one.
Okay. But we use five.
I mean, it's not the same, but, and I don't really know that. It makes sense, but you can have more than, you have one to three alternates until you're in board. Now we have one. But I don't know that that's, they're not really comparable.
Right.
Yeah, the MPC specifically says you can have alternates on the zoning hearing board.
On zoning hearing board.
Right. How about this Friday, the 17th at 10 o'clock?
Can you make it earlier?
Sure. 9 o'clock?
Yeah, 9, 9:30.
Okay. So why don't we do 9 o'clock? And who, who can, who can be there? All right, we'll have at least three of us or not four? Okay.
You can only have three.
You can only have three.
You can only have three.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you could advertise if you.
Okay. No, no, that's okay. We can just have three. Okay, 9 o'clock and together or?
I was gonna say you're doing it at the same time or?
No, we'll do, we'll do 9 o'clock and 9:30.
That should be fun.
Okay, that'd be great.
So who are the three now that we only can only have three?
It's only two.
I mean, us.
So we're one out of those two.
Of us. We can only have three.
I think you volunteered.
You said you would.
I thought I heard.
Yeah, I'll be there, you'll be there, Angel will be there.
Okay.
Okay, that's true. Sounds good. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Answer the easier one off the bro council, right? Do easier way off.
Okay, so that takes care of that. Petition to open the alley.
Just keeping that on as an agenda item. This past month, we did have Warehouse complete the survey. They're working on all the information we needed. I believe Solicitor Jones did review some, some documents regarding that, just to clarify some information. Do you want to add anything to that or?
There was just a question because one of the deeds describes the property going to the center line of the alley and the other three described as going to the edges. That kind of language there suggests to me that they have, there's a right of way for the set toward the center line of the alley. It just doesn't say that. Click, we're fine.
Okay.
Oh, we're not having to escape again on until we get everything done?
Basically, at this point, we'll have that on the agenda as long as we can get the, I guess, the legal description correct.
Well, yeah, that has to be noticed as given.
Yeah.
A chance to property and public.
Right, okay. All right, so there's really nothing to do with that. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you tell us what alley you're talking about?
Uh, yeah, it's actually, Danny, it's on, guy had heard, oh, you're better.
Yes, it's right across. It's, it goes right, you know where, Rob? When you come to the corner of Constitution. And well, Denny, that's right on the corner and the alley coming down is, goes right through there. It goes right over past my place. I live on, you know, I live on the corner.
I don't want to talk about that.
If needed Franklin. And that's, that's, that whole alley there, that's the one they're talking about, that whole section.
Danny, what was the name of that road? It used to have a name.
I think that's Winita Street there also.
Is that Winita Street also?
That's, that's what we.
Some maps you look at it says Winita Street. Others it doesn't say. Winita used to always ended, in my opinion, at right there in Franklin.
In Franklin.
And the alley never had a name that I knew of.
I, I don't think there was ever a sign there or anything either that I can remember.
Yeah.
And the deeds don't call it a name.
No, it says you have access to public.
Alley.
Yeah.
I say we charge a dollar, we sell tickets and whoever would go out, they get to name it.
I'd be a rich man if I put a toll radio.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, new business, consider approval.
At the risk of being boring.
Okay.
Go back to this structures in the runaway. Dave, is there anything in the motor vehicle cover that, if they've got something sitting in the cartway that the police go by that they can't do anything like?
Well, I think they can remove it. It's like if you have, if there's a unregistered vehicle parked, it could be removed.
Yeah.
Similar, similar situation.
Basketball that's sitting in, you know, four feet out in the cartway.
I guess if they want to do that, they could. I mean, it's, it's typically, you know, it's the general police powers of, you know, police wanting to take that, yes.
I just wonder why they.
I don't think they want to get faulted.
Well, obviously not, because some of these.
Because there really isn't an ordinance. They're picky when it comes, they want ordinances and signs and. Or they'll do it.
Somebody to run into it first and we can have a separate report if you do it.
That would be an incident driving our PPU's.
Oh.
We have, we have to talk more about the sensitive.
Yes, that would be another committee.
All right.
All right, consider approval of a low bid with alternates from Lauer Construction Services for $519,000, which is well below what we budgeted. $200,000 below for the public works of building renovation.
Make a motion to accept that.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Do we know anything about, I mean, we use them before or?
Lauer is.
I mean, we don't want to get into a situation like we did with the roads and these guys can't do concrete, but you have to bid on the concrete.
Right, but you've got to remember it's the lowest responsible building.
That doesn't mean you have to take it though, I'm quite.
If you're a lording, you do.
I don't think you could.
Well, how, how can it approve?
Yeah, you have to demonstrate, and, and actually the law is pretty particular on that. It almost says that that same contractor has to be followed on a contract that you previously.
That's why I say, do we know anything about?
No, for New Freedom Borough.
Well, that's why Warehouse did provide a little note at the bottom that I did have there. They're formerly Gordon Zuck, LSC of Warehouse has worked with them on several projects. And they're easy to work with and complete the project and schedule.
So I got to go to the next. Yeah.
Didn't?
In the state of Pennsylvania, weren't they working on changing that all? I thought they had it, they had it pretty well done.
I, I wouldn't like it if they would, but that has not happened.
Because they talked about making that that you didn't have to accept the lowest bid because of what we're talking about here.
I don't think it has, it hasn't been changed. That's one of my special areas. I do it for schools and this house and that's not. There's professional services. You don't have to give to a lowest responsible, you don't have to bid. But that's accountants, attorneys, engineers, architects.
Yeah, that would be the same thing.
People out. Striving lobbies, no, nevermind. Okay, so I have a first and a second to accept the bid. Any other discussion?
Quick question, is there any? The contractor or anything, is there, or would there be protections against costs spiked with the supply, uh, supply?
Chain?
Yes.
So this is a, this is a fix, it's a lump sum bid. So they're stuck with that. Now, if you can't get steel.
If the price goes up, they can't do anything. But if the price goes down.
Doesn't mean they can't ask. Because I've worked on several projects where they're asking. Where they say we can't get it for another six months and if you want to pay the extra, you have to pay the extra. But there is that, it's a lump sum contract. And I don't think there's anything involved here.
I think they'd probably be able to get an extension really easily and if it's not available, it's not available.
Yeah, yeah, what are you going to do?
We already extended their substantial completion date because of material issues.
Yeah, I'm just saying as, as far as the cost is concerned. If, if there was a spiking of certain material.
And, and even the, the contractor that was the parent of the bid or at the bid, he basically wanted to know if he could order supplies already, he was ready to go.
Yeah, that's what a lot of the contractors doing on their bids. They're ordering the day after they get the bid so that they have everything in line for their schedule. There's a lot of contractors that stuck over the last two years.
I'm sorry.
This is basically for the roof that's falling in, correct?
Yes, yeah, there's some additional improvements being done. This includes the bathroom.
Bathrooms.
ADA kind of stuff and improvements to the bathroom facilities. So, but yes, the bait primarily is the roof. Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, resolution adopting the emergency operations plan, which we don't have, but we were given.
Yeah, it's, the reason I think printed is in between the notification resource manual and the EOP plan or is the operations plan, it's 115 pages, so.
But it's what we reviewed.
It's the schema.
Right. Right, exactly. And then we had a presentation showing what was in, in the plan, so. So I have a motion. So I have a motion.
I'll make a motion if we approve the emergency operation.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Ordinance amending, uh, sections of chapters 2, 12, and 172, sewer and water rates, and establishing the ability to amend the rates by resolution. Uh, this has already been approved in the budget process. This is just the resolution to affect the, the...
Taxing ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance, about, yeah.
This is basically the ordinance to clean up existing ordinance, to allow future changes, including the next one proposed, uh, by resolution. It really doesn't make sense every time you need to amend your water and sewer rates, to do so by ordinance, to pay the advertising costs.
Right.
Um, so this ordinance cleans that up a little bit.
For some reason, the borough always want it that way.
Really?
Yeah. I, because I can tell you, I see, our office suggested that several times, when you went to amend your sewer and water rates.
Oh, who do you?
I'll make the motion.
You're the one who's here.
I have a motion to, uh, approve the ordinance amending sections. Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay, this is the resolution setting the tax millage at 1.85 for general perp... Water rates, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I crossed, but that at the same time. And the, uh, the next one is the resolution setting the water rates, which again, were approved in the budget, and we came up with the budget.
I'm gonna go ahead and tap that.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay. Uh, approval for a resolution setting the tax millage at 1.85 for general purposes, and 0.28 mils for fire services. These, this represents no change to, uh, last year's.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Approval of resolution establishing miscellaneous fee schedule.
We're gonna table that. Um, we had some things come up today. We didn't get to fully review that resolution in the office, so, um, basically, we can still get January, because we don't have a deets assess between January 1st and April 4th.
Yeah, okay.
And once, they stand until amended, so we're okay at this point.
Okay. Now, we're approving the 2022 budget. The only minor change, which really should make a difference, is I think we had, um, some amount in there for the police, because we didn't know what the budget, what the final outcome was gonna be for the PPUs.
Right.
Which is actually more than what we're going to, oh...
The, the amount we had included was 638,000. I think tonight it was said 638,808, so that's not...
So it's really, I don't think we have to worry about, right? Okay, just making, making sure, because we did advertise it and everything.
That's first.
So...
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022 budget.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Okay. Uh, consider authorizing advertising of the 2022 meeting schedule, which is already posted on the Borough website. We're in L seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Page three.
Hold on, the recommission, isn't it, the, I mean, it's keeping with the 1st, 30th January, if that was, from rec, then they weren't like referring to change, correct?
I wasn't aware that it changed that.
Oh, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Uh, consider approval of fire police service request from Glen Rock Borough. I, I thought we were going to blanket fire requests first of the year?
First of the year, yeah.
Oh, first of the year, okay.
I believe, I think it was Shrewsbury provided us an example, which listed all the activities for the, throughout the year, and basically said, or any of those that are, you know, pop up throughout the year, as long as the, uh, fire company has the, the staff and resources to do so. So we're gonna do that January, February, and then we'll be good throughout the year.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, entertain a motion to approve our police service request from Glen Rock Borough, which was for...
The care orders.
The care orders, right?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? My vote is aye. Is there any correspondents that we don't have, that I don't know about?
Yes, I have a correspondent that just came in, that meeting for Thursday, with, um...
EMS.
EMS is now 6 o'clock. Let me make sure. Are they due 1,900 hours? Is that, is, no, that's 7:00?
7:00.
Okay. I don't know why they have to, you're okay. 7:00.
Just subtract two.
Yeah, I know, I just...
Drop the number.
Missed out not being in the military. 7:00, so that's, okay, thank you.
Uh, public comment?
Is the parking lot at Veterans Park being dealt with, with the football?
Oh, yeah. That's, that's, that's an interesting thing. Um, I was, I was talking to, as most of you know, I schedule all the fields for the different municipalities, and I was talking to the SYC Warrior Football people, and apparently, two things happened, which I didn't, I don't think I've even told you about this, because it slipped my mind until the lady in the back reminded me. Um, anyway, that what happened was, the Lions Club had a meeting at the Boy Scouts building, and they closed half the parking lot at Veterans Park. And the second thing that happened was, the Boy Scouts decided they wanted to meet outside, so even though SYC Warrior Football had rented the pavilion, the, we won't say who, but somebody put caution tape around the pavilion area, the picnic table area, and wanted to allow the, the football players in. Um, we need to make some kind of a statement. I mean, if people rent the pavilion from us, they're paying a fee to rent the concession stand and the pavilion, and they're also using the parking lot. I, I don't, I think it pretty much has to stay first come, first served. You can't close down half the parking lot and say, this is my half, and like, you can't close the pavilion. So I'm not sure how we want to handle this, but we, we need to handle it in some way, shape, or form. I'll leave it up to you. I think, at, at minimum, we have to tell the Boy Scouts, don't do that, and tell the Lions Club, don't do that. So we all have to work and play well with others. Okay. Any other public comment?
Another meeting on January 3rd. Are you still gonna have the January 10th meeting to follow him one day?
I believe so, yeah.
It's, it's not advertised that way. I just figured we were doing everything.
Everything on the one day?
Yeah, yeah, that was, um...
Is there a 10th advertisement right now?
Do we have a lot to, I mean, we did much, just about everything tonight, too.
Yeah, we, we actually had a pretty good meeting tonight. Did you see one advertised?
No, I'm looking on the calendar. There's nothing on the 3rd, so I guess you'll put something that there'll be a meeting on the 3rd, and then there's a meeting on the 10th. So that's why I was wondering. I see the 10th is marked, but not the 3rd. And, and other boroughs are like, doing everything on the 3rd, so I didn't know...
Everybody has to give, there's the 3rd.
My organization...
By law, you have to do the organization.
I'm not questioning that, but they're doing everything on the 3rd, and they're forgetting, foregoing the second meeting of the month.
Yeah, that, I, I just pulled it up here, and that was just because it's a reoccurring in Savi Citizen, so I'll get in and change that. But yeah, you're right. Uh, everything, my, my understanding is we're doing everything on the 3rd. Everybody's okay with that.
Good, okay.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I have one more. Savi Citizen is great. I love everything that comes out on it. It's good information. The only one recommendation that I would have is, like, for general alerts, like, the offices could be closed on Thanksgiving. I got that alert at 8:35 at night. Can those alerts go out at, like, business hours, 9 to 5?
Yeah, the way, the way it is, it goes in a queue, so they try to limit how many are sent, so they try to send them between 9 and 9. Uh, yeah. Um, so if you, if you send a couple in a day, they kind of queue them, so that their system is sending them out. Um, but what we can do is try to get them in a little earlier, um, in the day, so that it'll, it'll send it a lot quicker then. If it gets it later in the day, it kind of, they stack and, and, but yeah, you're right.
I thought you could schedule them when you wanted them.
We can schedule them if it's an emergency. Emergency goes out right away, but as far as the time, it just kind of defaults, yeah. But we'll, we'll try to get all those earlier in the morning.
Anything with, like, garbage collection? If we know that the trucks are breaking down, we're gonna get that out?
Well, yeah, I mean, that we try to send right away. I think I might have sent that as an emergency.
I think you did.
Yeah. It was the information we had, so we felt the need to send it out, yeah.
I'd rather think that they're not coming in.
Yeah.
You know, be happy that they did.
You bet.
Yeah.
I'll take the communication in to pick up.
Anything else?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we do here.
Totally a fine, fine motion.
That's your, that's your last try to do that.
Can I get a second?
I'll go.
A juror.